Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And next up, we have the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion, a second clerk, we call the roll.
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And now we're moving on to ordinances. We have one ordinance on the first reading.
Madam Mayor, I, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for this, the first reading calendar and filed for the second reading calendar.
Madam Mayor, I, I don't consent because I'd like to make a motion. I guess that's the, that's the way to do it.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Is that how we do this? I guess so.
If you object.
Yeah, so you object.
I object.
Okay, great.
I'd like to move the council to amend ORD 20-22 to remove the requirement for geographic districts for, for commissioners on the district commissioning.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, I'm going to ask for discussion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we talked about this at the last meeting when we discussed this ordinance. And the more I think about it, the more strong I feel that a person's ability to deliver help to our city by drawing fair district lines that fairly allocate votes to districts for voters really doesn't depend on where they live. And then secondly, I really worry that assigning commissioners to a district creates the impression that they should advocate for that district or that they should represent that part of the city in drawing the district lines, which I see as encouraging balkanization and sort of siloing and isolating of our cities. The lines for the districts should be achieved by citywide consensus. Candidates should run in their district and work for their district and work for votes in their district. But how the districts are divided is a citywide issue. And we should draw from the best and the brightest all over the city without respect to, to where someone happens to live.
Madam Mayor, a question, I guess, for Councilmember Bajent. So, one, I agree with almost everything that you said there. And my question for you is, one of the things that we talked about, we got some public testimony by Colin, and I was talking about, what was the term that he used? It was neighborhoods of interest?
Communities of interest.
We need an of interest. So I guess my question is, by having people assigned in, and I'm not going to use the word districts, in different planning areas, is there a chance that those people might have a better way of identifying those neighborhoods of interest? And is there any value in that regard?
No, that's really fair, Councilmember Hallie Burton. And the representative who testified, I thought was really helpful on this. You know, community of interest really means some type of group of people who deserve or require or should have special consideration in how the districts are drawn. For example, it's, well, frankly illegal to take a community of interest, like an ethnic minority or a language minority, and shove them all into one district so they only get one representative. It's also illegal to split them unfairly so that their votes are diluted. That's one type of community of interest. Another type of community of interest might be a neighborhood that has particular needs with respect to the city. That's part of the geographic argument. Or a group of people who have some unique set of needs that needs to be listened to in City Hall. But because community of interest is so broad, it's so flexible, it's designed to capture really whatever unique set of needs some group of people might need, it's not inherently geographic. And I don't think, you know, the ability to develop a relevant community of interest shouldn't be over influenced by this geographic need. So I would, I would say two things to that. First, geographic boundaries don't necessarily get to community of interest, and we shouldn't imply that they do. But second, our policy statements and our policy directives on this commission should strongly indicate that geographic diversity is important, that community of interests are important, and, and that part of the duty of the mayor in creating this commission is to make sure that all of these interests are represented. I don't think it should be in the ordinance, but there should be a strong, strong policy directive that this is what we're looking for.
Madam Mayor, I agree with the underlying premise of this, but wonder, what I've been thinking about on this is that the way that the ordinance is written today, there's one requirement in the ordinance for how commissioners should be chosen, and that's geographically. There's nothing to stop a mayor not saying that you would do this from choosing five people who are essentially the same people but are geographically diverse. To me, the ordinance would be much stronger if we specify that the commissioners, and I don't know what the exact language is, but the language I've been thinking of is that the commissioners shall be chosen to recognize diverse communities of interest of all Boiseans, including geographically. Something along those lines would actually give residents of the city much more to hang their hats on if they had an objection to a particular commissioner if that commission didn't in fact represent a diverse group of interests from all Boiseans. If in fact it was chosen to represent the same interest, but they'd happen to live in different parts of the city. And so to me, the ordinance will be much stronger if we go with a statement like that rather than just requiring that the commissioners be geographically diverse.
Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Doing, doing our work by district is a huge cultural shift for us. You know, speaking for myself, someone who was not able to access this seat in the traditional way, I, I wasn't, I didn't had a neighborhood association, I wasn't part of a commission. I accessed the seat because I was involved in the community in a different way. And one that, at least when I ran at large, resonated with the constituents, that they thought it was important that a renter, that a woman of color, someone from the working poor class, be among the decision makers at this dais. And I didn't know how that would work out that, when it came time to reelection. And I was happy to see that at least the past four years had resonated with our constituents in what became District Three, and I was welcomed back to the dais. I think because this new system has really been thrust upon us here in Boise. It's not something that our constituents asked for, it's something that was imposed on us. And then we had to scramble to conform with the law. Any opportunity that we have to slow this process down and have it be a bit more of what we would like it to be, that truly inadequately represents the people of Boise, I think we should do that. And so thank you, Councilman Bajent, for attempting to slow down this process, to honor the people that we represent. I myself, and I don't think any of my colleagues have ever done our work in terms of where we live. We do it in terms of the work that our constituents want done on their behalf. And, and that comes from being engaged with our community, not necessarily just with our neighborhood. So that is why I seconded the motion.
Madam Mayor, maybe just a question for Council President. I'm all about questions other council members this morning. I agree with the intention that you have in making sure that we've got a more diverse representation on the commission to, to do the best that we possibly can. What I don't understand is how we can actually do that in a way that's objective. So like if we have things that are split up between planning areas, we know that there has to be one person per these planning areas. But if we have a little bit more of a general statement, I guess it would then be on council when it would come time to approve a mayor's selection, we would have to be using our own interpretation. So maybe you can just speak a little bit more about how we would actually be able to incorporate what your request was.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I've been thinking a lot about this. We've found a lot of ways in this country to divide ourselves. And I think this idea that dividing the city into these geographic areas will somehow mean that those people are more representative of Boiseans as a whole is another example of that. We also have a lot of distrust of government right now. And I understand that distrust. I know where the messaging is coming from that has helped build it. But I think if we're going to rebuild trust, we have to rebuild processes that rely in part on trust. We're represented, we're elected to represent the people of this community. The mayor's elected to represent the people of this community. If we design a process that specifies that the commission has to be diverse, but without specifying exactly how it's going to be diverse, we have a process that I think will begin to rebuild trust because one would assume that the mayor will make good decisions on who to choose for those commissioners. I believe that this mayor will do that. If the mayor doesn't, this council sits then in judgment of that decision. And we then represent, no, that isn't the correct choice here. Let's, let's go back to the drawing board. But instead, we're trying to impose systems where we take the judgment and the trust out. And I think that doesn't work in a democracy. I think judgment and trust are inherent in making democracy work. And to me, this is a better process to help build that.
Madam Mayor, I, I want to jump on that too, because this is something that I've really been thinking about a lot in the last year. At the end of the day, Councilmember Hallie Burton, every single one of our institutions and every single one of our systems depends on good people doing the right thing. It's true of the press, it's true of the government, it's true of our healthcare system, it's true of every single institution. And if good people don't do the right thing, then they can all crumble. And there's no set of rules that you can make to prevent that from happening. Implying that geographic diversity solves that problem, I mean, putting that into the ordinance and making it a boxy check, as the council president just said, removes the discretion, removes the hard work, removes the hard thinking, and ultimately removes the trust. So I think without this extra requirement, good people will have to think hard about what the right thing to do is, and that's, that's what we need for our institutions to work.
Madam Mayor, I don't know exactly, having not faced this for a while, what the right process would be. I think we send this back to staff with direction based on the discussion today. If everyone votes to agree with that and bring it back for first reading, next meeting, if they conclude that it's not substantial enough that we need to do more. We don't have to have a public hearing on any ordinance. We could choose to do that. But I think the, the first thing we do is send it back, get the correct language in it, bring it back for first reading, and then make that decision, if that makes sense.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of comments. Appreciate that there's a lot of differing opinions on this. I'm the only city councilperson who doesn't live inside of the North End. I think that balanced government is important. We have a federal system, we have a state system where you have geographic diversity. You have those in the House that are elected by district, and you have those in the Senate that are statewide, and you have a governor that's elected at large. This law was born out of the fact that there was concern that people weren't being represented. And I think if we are truly a city for everyone, we have to recognize that geographic diversity plays into that. There is a feeling often that those who don't live in the core of Boise aren't as much as part, aren't as part of Boise as they'd like to be. I know that I'm in the minority on this, but I think sideboards are important. And I think you build trust through sideboards, and you build trust through the ability to say, we're not going to appear to stack the deck. And right now, without any sideboards, then you could continue to have a system that perpetuates insulation. And I think it's important to have lots of different voices. I know that I, I'm clearly outvoted on this, but I think it's important for us to have lots of different opinions at the table, even when, you know, your opinion doesn't carry the day.
Madam Mayor, just, everything that Councilmember just said is certainly true. All these things are important, and it should be strongly stated in the policy. But just to clarify, nothing about this changes the fact that we'll be electing councilpeople by districts, that the geographic interests will be represented on this council. It's just the narrower question of whether we use districts to exclude some people from serving on that commission, or excuse me, geographic areas to exclude some people from serving on that commission.
Madam Mayor, as the council member who's kind of the sponsor of this ordinance, I, I guess I'm a little bit ambivalent as to whether this geographic representation requirement is built into the ordinance, or whether we represent it in policy in some way. We actually conversed about both, and so I think that either one really covers it. And then it would be contingent upon, Madam Mayor, when reviewing all of the applications that we'll hopefully receive from various interested people in the community to ensure that we have geographic diversity, that we have demographic diversity, that we really have a commission that represents the breadth of our community, both from where people live and what communities they come from. And then it would be up to us to say, you hit the mark, or no, you did not hit the mark, which I hope does not happen. I think that we'll have a lot of folks interested in this. And, you know, and probably from all over the city. And, and I hope that that's true. But, like I said, I'm not committed to having it necessarily in the ordinance written the way that it is. I would be fine with having it in the ordinance in a more generalized statement, and then really shoring that up in policy. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I know that Councilwoman Clegg talked about, we don't have to have a public hearing, but I think in the era of good government, because we're taking, or it looks like the votes will be there to take this out and redo this, I, I do think we need one. I think that would be important, and I think it would strengthen the ordinance.
Madam Mayor, there, there's so much that I agree with, it's been said. There's one thing that kind of keeps coming back to me. I really don't think it's going to change the way that the map is shaped out by the time that we're done. I think that we're going to have experts on this panel. I think that you're going to do a good job selecting people. I think that we're going to do a good job screening them, and we're going to have a really, really great map that breaks the city into different areas so that that representation that Councilmember Willetts is talking about is available. And I agree that I don't know that having commissioners who help with that process from different areas is going to change the way that that map looks. Second thing is that by the time that there's the next election, every single council member up here will represent a different area of the city. And going forward in this ordinance, there will be representation to vote in or vote out any commissioners that the mayor approves. And so I think that that actually does sort of take care of itself in that type of representation that we have there. And I also agree that this is a pretty large change based of what we sent to the public originally. And I don't want to slow down the process because I knew that, I know that we need to do this as fast as possible. But I don't disagree that this is a big enough change that it might require more public comment on it. My concern is I don't know what the public comment is going to change in this decision. So I, I'm back and forth on whether or not, is it needed because it is such a big change? Or to, like, have we already decided that this is the direction that we think that this needs to go? And would that be affected at this point by additional public comment?
Madam Mayor, I think it's important, and, and Councilwoman Clegg, you talk a lot about process, and I appreciate that. And I think, you know, good ingredients typically lead to a good outcome. I think even if the, if the ordinance doesn't substantially change, I think it's important that people are listened to. I mean, we have a lot of people here today that have taken time out of their day. I'm, I marvel at the number of people that are in this room. Even if that ordinance doesn't change much, I think the opportunity for civil discourse is important so that people feel heard, even if the, even if things don't change, it's an opportunity for us to listen. And I think listening is important.
Madam Mayor, we don't have to decide today whether or not we're going to have another public hearing. What we need to decide today, are we going to send this back and ask staff to bring back language that represents a conversation we've had today? If we vote to support that, I'm happy to work with Madam Mayor and, and Council President Protam Woodings in consultation with all of the rest of you to determine how and when we'll vote on the final ordinance, and whether we'll have a public hearing before then.
I'm going to point out that I think some of these things need to be decided today because there's an expectation that we come up with a commission, that that commission have a full calendar of public engagement over the course of the summer, and be able to then have maps presented to you as the legislative branch whose responsibility is to make this decision. And so because of that, I'm, I'm going to ask that you deliberate and make a decision on these things today. We don't, we cannot afford to continue to push this decision further back given the responsibility that this council has to ensure that there's a public process on districts this summer. And I'll also say that regardless of how you decide that these, that this ordinance ought to look today, redistricting is a legislative process. And because the council wishes to have a commission, by our city code, it's required that I present commissioners to the council. That is the one role that I have in this, because the council has opted to have a commission review maps, take public feedback, and then propose to the council the districts that you'll ratify or change. The public engagement piece is really important. What people care most about is what the maps and the districts ultimately look like. And we've got to have enough time to have that meaningful conversation about the maps themselves. So if you would like to have another hearing, of course, that's duly before council. But I'd ask that you deliberate and make a decision today so that staff can bring back an ordinance that's reflective of the change that, changes that you made in response to the feedback that you heard in a public hearing, which is typically how ordinances are changed. And then we can move forward with a process that respects the need for public engagement this summer.
Madam Mayor, in that spirit, I would ask then to amend the motion to strike the section talking about geographic, choosing commissioners via geographic districts, and instead insert that diverse commissioners shall be chosen that are representative of all Boiseans, including geographically.
I consent.
So that was an amended motion, amended your motion, and you consented?
Correct, so we need a second.
Who was the second originally?
Second.
Okay, all right. Actually, that's got to be done differently so that we don't run afoul of process. The maker of the motion, now we have two seconds on the floor. Are we okay? Okay, we got a second to the council president's motion. Oh, great, okay. So it was the original second, seconded the amendments to the motion that you approved. We're good, okay. And with that, I'm going to call a question. Claire? Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Can we have the motion reread just one more time?
Sure.
Thank you.
Diverse commissioners shall be chosen that are representative of all Boiseans, including geographically.
I'm going to, I know I've done this before, I'm going to pass. I know I get like three seconds, but I'm still going to pass.
You're the, everybody else has voted. Yeah, you got to vote.
I'm going to vote no, and here's why. I think the motion is strengthened by more diversity. I think that's important. I would like it to be required that there's geographic diversity by areas of areas of community. Also wished I would have had more time to think about this. I didn't know that this was going to be reconsidered in this way, so I'm feeling a little unprepared because I would have liked to have a little bit more time to process this. This will pass, but I think given the fact that there's not a requirement by area for geographic diversity and it's just lumped in, I'm going to vote no.
Woodings.
Yes.
Drive in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so with that, we'll head to second reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on second reading be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
R D dash eighteen dash twenty-two and ordinance C A R two one dash zero 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 three one for property located at two eight zero one West Blue Street. Admitting zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change a classification of real property particularly described in section one of this ordinance and adjourned rights ways from R dash one C, single family residential to R dash two D D A, medium density residential with design review with the development agreement, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're moving on to the public hearing. We have nothing else on our agenda. A couple of things to kick us off. Welcome back to those of you that were here last night and came again. Welcome to all of you that are joining by Zoom. We will start with folks in the room and then move to folks on Zoom. And just a couple of things, I'm going to read something so that I say the same thing every time and then I'll be a little bit more human. A live stream of this meeting and all public hearings for the Interfaith Sanctuary are available for live stream or playback at the city of Boise Public Meetings YouTube channel. Due to the volume of people wishing to testify on Zoom, we're asking that if you're not a party of record or you don't wish to speak, that you watch the hearing on the YouTube channel rather than on Zoom. And and that those that are a party of record will be, oh, and also and it, once you've, so if you're a party of record and you're testifying on Zoom, once you've testified on Zoom, our clerk is going to remove you from the Zoom feed. And then you can watch the hearing by YouTube. And we're doing that because our clerk, when she's managing Zoom, she'll be calling folks to testify. But it's hard to work through all the names. And when there are people just watching city council from the Zoom stream, I'm sure many of you have done this on other things. So she's going to remove you, but you can go to the YouTube channel then and watch it, watch the whole proceeding live once you've testified. And so for those of you that are on Zoom, if you're not planning on testifying today, if you just jump off and go to the YouTube channel, we'd really appreciate it. And with that, we are, I'll start with the list here. And then I've got a couple of questions just on some names that were a little different than the party of record and that we'll go through. I'm just going to repeat what I said last night, just a shorter version of it. And that is that I ask that all of us come to this with respect for each other, for the community, for the people that we're talking about, and recognize that at the end of this, we've all got to go back to living together. And that we all love this place. We express that in different ways. But please remember that each of us is a person and is coming with the best of intentions. And then finally, I have allergies, so if my eyes water, you're not making me cry. They're red and itchy, but and I'll probably sound a little funny, but I've just got allergies and didn't want to take allergy medicine because I wasn't sure what it was going to do to me today. And with that, we're going to get started. First on the list, I think is Dave Fuji or that lives on Silver Lake. And I'll say too, we've, if you're a party record, we've got your name and address. I'd ask you to read your name into the record, but if you're not comfortable putting your address on a live stream, that's all right, because we've got it.
Yeah, so I've got a slide deck, CUP twenty-one zero 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 twenty-six expert witnesses to. You have that?
And next up is Denise Zimmerman and then Don Dutcher. If you've got slide decks and you want to let Josh know so he's ready in advance, you can do that now. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Dave Fuji. I live in Lake Harbor. IFS claims that P and Z Commission decision to deny their CUP relied solely on lay testimony, and this is false, and I'd like to illustrate why. Next slide. Keith Lovelace is a former ACHD commissioner and civil engineer with 25 years of experience in land use development. He provided testimony regarding the extreme adverse impacts on the residences who share a fence line with this project. Lovelace explained that IFS didn't need to buy the state's street property to apply for the CUP and explained that many applications are made without ownership. He highlights the poor decision by Interfaith to sell their current location without CUP approval. And he also reminded the commission that the Veterans Park neighborhood already contains several shelters and significant low income housing. And the Boise should not continue to concentrate poverty in this neighborhood, but should distribute low income housing across Boise. Next slide. Tim Flaherty, the former Assistant Director of IFS and homeless advocate, emphasized the importance of keeping the shelter close to downtown services. He, along with another former IFS employee, testified in opposition to IFS moving out of the downtown area where the services are centralized by blueprint Boise design. Next slide. Testimony Russ Redd, on behalf of Paula Forney, former Boise City Council member. She remember, she reminded the commission of the city's responsibility to approve projects that are fiscally responsible. The point four point three million dollar police station was built close to IFS on purpose. Forney quoted the Boise PD's statement that moving IFS away from downtown will, and I quote, "impact their limited resources" and forewarns of an influx of calls impacting their ability to provide service to other parts of the city. It is the mark of a strong, aggressive professional to have a candid attitude in the face of change, and I believe that of Chief Lee. However, just because the BPD doesn't use the phrase undue burden, when you read between the lines and consider how overworked and understaffed our wonderful police department is, it is clear that the CUP creates an undue burden. The commissioners base their denial on these professional expert testimonies. I feel like it's insulting that IFS refers to them as laypeople. And I urge you to uphold their decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuji. Next, we've got Denise Zimmerman and then Don Dutcher. After that, Mark Montoya.
Denise Zimmerman. In the unfortunate case that this appeal is granted, I have serious concern that Interfaith will begin operating their shelter prior to meeting all conditions and requirements. This use, even if temporary, must not be allowed. Without any provision specifically enacted to prevent this, the surrounding neighborhood has grave concerns that IFS will either not complete what is required to meet the conditions or otherwise just violate them. With no checks for compliance from the city and no easy way to remediate it, it'll become a disaster for the neighbors. The neighbors are also concerned that the city will take a lax approach, allowing the neighborhood to be further impacted. For example, the prior Salvation Army rehab facility on Willow Lane, where the WCA shelter is now, operated with many more beds than they were allowed. After significant years of impacts to the neighborhood, the city simply allowed the violating behavior by approving a modification to the cup. We are fearful the IFS will do the same and are concerned the city will just continue to rubber stamp any violations. These concerns are well founded based upon Interfaith's past behavior. For example, IFS failed to appropriately use Martin Settlement Funds as mandated in the settlement. IFS continued to operate a homeless shelter after the temporary permit to do so had expired for its MISO seven one ninety and two two six. This permit said, "You shall only be for a hundred and eighty days and no extension shall be granted." But a month beyond a hundred and eighty days, operating without a valid permit, IFS requested extension. Of course, it was granted. IFS operated a shelter without a conditional use permit. The city incorrectly allowed Interfaith to operate a shelter on a C three D property, which was required to have a cup under the then current zoning code. And Interfaith's current executive director participated in creating an unofficial group home. According to the Idaho Stateman, this home allowed aggressive behaviors, allowed doing drugs on premises, and allowed the site to fall into disrepair. While they may have been well meaning, the result was not well run, not safe, not lawful, and not successful. The commission was right. This appeal must not be granted. If it is, the city must not idly watch or worse, approve of violating behaviors. The city must take steps to request meaningful conditions that ensure lawful conformance with the commitments. Also, Interfaith must not be allowed to operate a shelter under any temporary permit and definitely not until all construction conditions and requirements are met. Thank you.
Yes. I have a request. While I understand folks not wanting to give their address on the live stream, it would be helpful to me at least to know which neighborhood people are from when they come up. So if you could just state your neighborhood association or general neighborhood, that would be really helpful to me. Welcome.
My name is Don Dutcher. My wife and our children have been on the Lake Harbor area for thirty-one years. And I really thank you for the opportunity to make our comment. We want to comment on the Wardell arguments on not being required to have a plan. Mr. Wardell comments that the applicant doesn't have a requirement to create a security plan. Of course, we already know that the record clearly shows that PZC did not require the applicant to have a plan. He argues that he doesn't have to produce a security plan because, one, the record is closed. Two, the code doesn't require it like it does a garbage plan. Three, they don't have enough time in three to four weeks to create one. Four, they don't have enough development details to create it. And five, the BPD Chief Lee said that the plan is driven largely by commission-driven conditions. But there are no requirements that prevent the applicant from proactively developing a security plan. The applicant has known of the security and safety concerns as well as requests for security and safety plans for almost a year and has chosen not to act. Surely that wasn't because there wasn't enough time. And just because the applicant hasn't completed, completely firmed up all development details, it doesn't follow that a plan cannot be drafted that gives guidance for those details as well as being general enough to allow details to be determined further along. And to be completely clear, Chief Lee said the plan is the responsibility of the applicant. The chief went as far to indicate that the applicant's efforts and investments into that plan would be a clear indication of their commitment to safety and security. And then Mr. Wardell says they are happy to create a plan and that they have security experts that they have worked with before. But of course, these are likely just hollow words since the record has no evidence of any effort put towards developing a plan. If IFS is so willing to create a plan, why don't they do so? We continually hear that IFS claimed that there is a security and safety plan for their existing River Street site, which given the elevated River Street crime statistics must not be working. If there is a plan, it was undoubtedly created without cup conditions requiring it since no cup is in the place of their current location. So why doesn't? Why doesn't IFS and Mr. Wardell do the best job they can and create a plan? BPD is ready to consult with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mark Montoya. Hello, and then Gary Zimmerman and Carrie Espinoza.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm Mark Montoya, and I live in the Veterans Park area.
Will you lift the mic just a bit?
In the Veterans Park area. Thank you. About three years ago, a man purported to be a homeless transient was hired by a sympathetic woman in a residential neighborhood. While there, he stole a firearm from her home. Sometime later, a grandmother went out to a convenience store. We presumed to get some items for her granddaughter's sleepover, but we don't know, and we can't ask her because he was shot and killed while in her car near that convenience store. Later that same evening, police were called to a nearby location where a man was randomly shooting into an irrigation ditch. He claimed to have mixed alcohol and pills and had blacked out. He was arrested for negligent discharge and drug possession. The sheriff's office was not able to hold him for the nearby homicide, however, because they were waiting on the state crime lab to process the projectiles from the scene. So they had to let him go. Later, a murder warrant was issued for his arrest because it turns out that the homicide bullets from the scene match one of the guns found on him at the time of his arrest for negligent discharge. The suspect still remains at large. This was, I believe, back in twenty eighteen. He's still at large and he's believed to be circulating as a under an alias as a as a homeless transient. So a trip to the convenience store, a trip to the convenience store for this grandmother wound up being a trip to the funeral home for the family. This case happened in New Mexico. It didn't happen in Boise, but I know about it because the homicide victim was my sister-in-law. Charitable actions can have unintended side effects sometimes. My own family has experienced this in the aforementioned case. We also have evidence here in Boise of a low barrier shelter causing maybe some issues with the Wiley Street Station apartments here in Boise. So I understand that you cannot totally eliminate risk, but I think we can make responsible decisions to help manage that risk. Fourth, for example, Fourth of July fireworks are wonderful things to see and enjoy, but we don't have them up in the foothills because you can't control every spark and the cost of a mistake is too great. Likewise, Interfaith does wonderful work and they should be applauded for it. But we need to make some decisions about how to properly manage that activity. Please affirm Planning and Zoning's denial of the application for this, in this particular case. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Zimmerman. And then Carrie Espinoza and Deborah Frank.
Hi, my name is Gary Zimmerman, and I live in the Veterans Park neighborhood. The decision in front of you this week is clear. The Planning and Zoning Commission's denial must be upheld. The commission heard numerous experts testifying in opposition, including senators, land use planners, first responders, numerous social workers and medical professionals, former Interfaith executives, employees, volunteers, former Boise City planners, councilpersons and fire veterans, former ACHD commissioners, retired police chiefs, families of BPD officers, and all who gave substantial competent evidence that the proposal is too big, represents a failed model, will bring drug use and crime to the vicinity, will create large increases in fire and EMS calls, will burden services and inefficiently use taxpayer dollars, is incompatible with the neighborhood, belongs downtown due to the comp plan compliance, concentrates poverty, et cetera. This evidence clearly shows that Interfaith did not meet the criteria of compatible use, no undue burden, and no adverse impacts. By refusing to provide, oh, and how did Interfaith respond to this expert evidence? By refusing to provide any security or safety information, by attacking the neighbors and others that requested that, and by dismissing their concerns. For example, Interfaith tells a neighbor to quote, "Get a dog in a security system." Interfaith says they care about neighborhood safety, but adds it's not their responsibility. Interfaith in neighborhood meetings attacks neighbors through made up stories and shaming and further attacks neighborhood through media manipulation and misleading statements. All this, while BPD Chief Lee clearly stated it was Interfaith's responsibility to produce these plans and that they'd show Interfaith's commitment to safety and security. Interfaith's response, coupled with the record which shows of the, that they knew of the numerous requests for safety and security information, the adverse impacts that their shelters have, and that they were aware that their policies have released dangerous guests into the community with horrific results. This can only mean that Interfaith knew that their impacts and burdens cannot be mitigated. Otherwise, why refuse to provide helpful information and plans? Why attack the neighborhood? Also surprising is that this wealth of expert testimony and substantial evidence has largely been ignored in staff reports and the appeal itself. You must not do the same. This appeal is designed to distract you from the substantial evidence through outlandish claims, emotional arguments, picking at definitions, and seeking to avoid responsibility for mitigation. Don't be distracted. The Planning and Zoning Commission wasn't, and you must not be. You must uphold the denial.
Thank you. Karen Espinoza, then Deborah Frank and David Bergerid, maybe? Welcome.
Good. Good morning. Karen Espinoza, I live in the Veterans Park neighborhood on Willow Lane, down towards the Green Belt. So there is ample evidence placed in the record for this application that shows a low-barrier homeless shelter will not be compatible use for a predominantly residential area. If this application were to be granted, it asks way too much of the existing private property holders and businesses to have to make this type of use fit into their neighborhood. It places an undue burden on the other properties to take measures above and beyond the norm to protect their safety and their property value simply to accommodate a type of use that did not exist when they obtained an interest in their property and/or business. These measures include having to file no trespassing agreements with the Boise Police Department each year, having to frequently file code compliance violations with the city and ACHD, and request service from the police just as the record shows the businesses by the current IFS shelter location have had to resort to. Having to annually meet to review impacts on the neighborhood and businesses while having limited to no ability to impose new conditions or revoke the permit. Having to install security cameras and alarm systems, just as the businesses have done that are near the current shelter location. And ultimately, the burden of choosing to move because the safety risk has become too much to bear and economic injury to their property jeopardizes their financial future. Many of the residents of the Veterans Park neighborhood have already witnessed their friends and neighbors sell their properties because of these impacts. These concerns are no different than the concerns being expressed by the properties and businesses near the current IFS shelter location. It is unreasonable to expect the properties and businesses in the Veterans Park neighborhood to resort to these measures and to accept a disruption in their lives and interference with the quiet and comfortable enjoyment of their life and property, especially when this specific type of use, a low-barrier emergency homeless shelter, did not exist when they chose to acquire and invest in their property, and this type of use is not an automatic by-right use. The commissioners did their duty. They respond, they are responsible for protecting from the Department of the Comprehensive Plan. The policies for social services in the plan state the location for these services to be downtown, and for the longstanding precedent shows this has been adhered to. The evidence in the record supports the defense, defensible decision of deniable, denial made by the commissioners. And on a more personal note, my husband and I have lived and raised our family on the, in Willow Lane for the last 27 years. I've worked hard for our home, my husband and I both, and I just retired this year from the Boise School District after 32 years. We have been looking forward to enjoying our retirement in our home. But based on this decision, we will sadly need to sell our home and relocate completely out of the area altogether.
Karen.
Because of high home prices.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Frank.
Hi, I have a slide. It is purpose congregate.
And I'm going to ask again, if I call your name and you have a slide, please let Josh know in advance. And there's also a clicker right here that people can use to move their own slideshows. So we've got Deborah Frank, David Bergerid, Bruce Moore, and then Jennifer McBride. If any of you have slides, please let Josh know.
The purpose of Boise's Development Code is clearly spelled out to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of present and future residents, to stimulate economic activity and a variety of housing choices. Next slide.
You can move your slide, the slides yourself with that little clicker right there? Yep.
Interfaith's proposal fails to meet the developmental code, as well as failed to meet the Planning and Zoning Commission's legal criteria for the approval of their cup. It is well-understood that congregate shelter is unsafe. With well over 205 people living in communal sleeping, bathing, recreation, and dining arrangements, we can expect crowded conditions that strip the dignity from the very people we hope to give a hand up to. We can also expect the rapid spread of diseases like TB, SARS, COVID-19, Omicron, and now the BA2 variant, that again highlights the uncertainty of when the pandemic will ever end. HUD clearly recommends a best practice of individual bedroom and individual bathroom. HUD has made almost $3 million available to Boise for the creation or purchase of a non-congregate shelter. Advocacy groups for the homeless, government and government agencies all agree that non-congregate shelters are the best way to go today and in the future. The National Coalition for the Homeless say, "Large congregate living shelters did not work, and we should never go back to those days." The National Alliance to End Homeless speaks of an increased understanding that private, non-congregate space has obvious benefits for people of shelter. Kings County, home of Seattle and Washington University, even said before COVID, "We've known that non-congregate is the best way to proceed." Even Interfaith Sanctuary has agreed that the benefits of non-congregate shelter have better outcome. However, IFS stubbornly plunges ahead with an inflexible plan for congregate shelter and without a safety plan for the nearby residents, neighborhoods, and businesses. There are no conditions that Interfaith Sanctuary can mitigate to the adverse effects that will overcome Veterans Park, Sunset, and Colister neighborhood. The only, the only answer is a fundamental change. Why lead with failed footsteps when the future of Boise is in our hands today? Madam Mayor, City Council, please uphold your Planning and Zoning Commission's vote of five to one and deny the approval.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, yes.
Deborah, question for you up here? Yeah. I'm curious, is what your definition of a large congregate shelter is?
A large congregate shelter is over 205 beds.
That's, that's pretty specific.
And so we've got 205 beds plus unlimited mats, and plus we have emergency situations.
Can you, can you give me your definition based off the research that you've done of what a large congregate shelter is, and not in reference to this application, but in general?
Um, I, you know, at this point, I would have to go ahead and get with my Sunset Neighborhood, Veterans Park, and Colister. And it would be, you know, as far as my personal feeling, I would rather not share that on record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David. Welcome. And then Bruce Moore, Jennifer McBride, and Miranda J.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you.
Could you pull the mic up just a little bit?
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Bergerid. I live on Willow Lane, about a quarter mile from the shelter. Although there are several factors that are very concerning about the shelter, I'd like to bring out three points that I feel are quite relevant. The first one is, how is the city going to address ordinance 5931, which is the Veterans Park Neighborhood Policy Guide? And it has been adapted by the city and put into the Boise's Comprehensive Plan. The document has 31 pages. I'm only going to read the, the goals of this. There are three goals. The first one is to preserve the residential character of this neighborhood, to encourage future development, which recognizes the unique amenities of the natural features, and to be consistent with the character. Encourage appropriate infill development without negatively impacting the existing neighborhoods. The second goal, to meet the service needs of the Veterans Park neighborhood for commercial facilities while reducing negative impact from these types of uses on the adjacent residential areas. And the third is to recognize State Street's importance as a gateway to Boise and encourage development appropriate to project a positive image of the city and the neighborhood. My second thought is, I'm appalled by the appeal letter written by Attorney Wardle on 120 of 22, stating that the decision of the commission is arbitrary, capricious, or an abusive discretion in that it was made in reliance on irrelevant assertions made outside of record without rational bias basis in a direct disregard of fact and circumstances presented. He also stated, "The commission is not supported by substantial evidence." "The concerned citizens diligently worked respectfully, honestly, with integrity to support the denial of this cup." We find the words insulting. I find the words insulting. And those who work so hard to show evidence that will protect the integrity of our neighborhood. The third thought I'd like to bring out is the future planning and zoning for the distance between shelters and residential areas, which is 300 feet. I know this is a proposed change, but why would we want to look? Why wouldn't we look forward, as the visionaries have, to put this forward and use future thoughts to help our future form in a correct way here? Please deny this CUP. I think the ramifications will be substantial to the neighborhood. And it's going to be much easier to deny it than try to repair it after the fact. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Jennifer McBride, Miranda J., Jody Graham, and David Shirtlift. Oh, did I, did I pass you over? Oh, I'm so sorry. Bruce Moore. Yep, Bruce is next. And then Jennifer McBride, Miranda J., Jody Graham, David Shirtlift.
We all look alike, right? Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Bruce Moore, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the project. Long ago and far away, I served as executive director of successful combined city and county housing authorities. We administered a broad variety of programs and worked closely with providers for the homeless. We did good work, of which I was proud. Our providers for the homeless, however, did tell us that of their homeless single men, 60% had felony arrest records. I tried to find out what the number is here in Boise and was unsuccessful. If this project is approved, residential neighborhood you are hearing from today, the Green Belt City Park, will have large numbers of felons on a 24/7/365 basis. I can think of no conditions that eliminate that threat. We all agree that a city is made better by helping those who are without housing through no fault of their own. The proposal before you would also impose high and ongoing costs vulnerable neighborhoods in order to shelter felons. This does not make the city a better place. If this project is approved, no small child will be as safe as they are currently. No young mother with a baby will feel as safe in a park or on a greenbelt. No bicycle will be as safe on a front porch. Be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Jennifer McBride. Miranda J., Jody Graham, David Shirtlift, and Jennifer Thornfeld.
Jennifer McBride, Silver Lake Lane. In 2019, the Veterans Park neighborhood faced a similar development proposal for a low-budget motel less than 300 feet from the currently proposed site. It required a CUP, which the commission denied. A motel and a shelter are similar uses, as both are intended to provide short-term stays. A key difference is that the motel is considered a lower-impact use than a shelter home. Code allows motel conditionally in multifamily residential and are by right in commercial districts. In contrast, code allows a shelter home conditionally only in commercial districts. Mr. Wardle testified that because the parcel in Interfaith's application is Zone C2, where motels are by right use, the issues identified in the Alamo sub-motel CUP were moot, as a motel here would be by right. However, this is not true. The proposed Interfaith site is a split-zone parcel with 25% of the land zone for single-family residential. So the code requires an exception for any development application with C2 use. Code dictates a hearing before PNZ, at which a proposal for any general exception is judged against the same decision criteria as a CUP. The findings relied upon for the denial of the Alamo sub-motel proposal are very applicable to this parcel. In that CUP, the PNZ commission found that the motel was not compatible with the uses in the neighborhood, which were described as primarily single and multifamily residential uses. They also found that the unlimited hours of operation would burden the neighborhood. The shelter is similar, having a standard practice of expelling guests after hours who do not comply with behavioral expectations. The motel proposal was found non-compliance with Blueprint Boise Goal EC 4.1 for promoting a positive image of the city along community gateways, which also applies to the shelter proposal. Finally, the findings in the motel CUP denial relied heavily on the fact that the motel proposed an internally-oriented use, serving only motel tenants, with no uses open to the community. This comment mirrors the issues present in the Interfaith CUP. The proposed use is internally oriented and does not provide any uses for the community. In summary, to approve the current application after denying the 2019 application for a motel based on its internally-oriented character, lack of misused amenities for the community, and incompatibility with residential uses in the neighborhood, it should be denied. Please uphold the denial of the CUP.
Thank you. Miranda J. And then on deck, Jody Graham, David Shirtlift, Jennifer Thornfeld, and, and is, there's, I do have a question. Marita Kirby, are you, do you also go by MJ? Okay, great.
Hi, my name is Miranda J. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of favor for the appeal for Interfaith Sanctuary. In the past four years that I have had the honor of working at Interfaith Sanctuary, I've seen a growing need for community resources and improved shelter services for those experiencing homelessness. The special needs of specific factions of the homeless population become higher in demand as the numbers of those becoming homeless rise. Families with children, elderly, and medically fragile are among these increasing numbers at rates I have not previously experienced. Those with high medical needs cannot be properly served with the dignity and grace they deserve within the walls of traditional overnight emergency shelters of the past. But there's nowhere else for them to go. Hospitals can't keep them. Assisted living and long-term care availability is slim to none in our area. Picture a man who suffers several strokes and loses his mobility, confined to a wheelchair with limited ability to care for himself, loss of control of body function and loss of the ability to express himself efficiently, discharged from the rehab facility to an emergency shelter, where all of his limitations are seen by everyone around him, in need of physical and occupational therapy, no income and no options for placement in the care he deserves. Now a person with a recent leg amputation, struggling to learn how to function without a limb, discharged with continued open wounds from diabetic ulcers, in need of in-home health, wound care, PT and OT services that are not offered to someone if they're residing in a dormitory congregate shelter setting due to HIPAA regulations. How is that person supposed to heal and overcome his newly suffered limitations? Thankfully, with our medically fragile program, we currently have these cases, and many more didn't have to be denied the care they need and were able to get the services necessary to strengthen and be served with dignity until permanent solutions became available. I field a handful of calls and emails each week from hospitals and professionals with more and more cases just like this. And without our program, they would have no And without our program, they would have nowhere to go. One more special case I'd like to share is that of a man who lived in northern Idaho that became very sick and was hospitalized. Diagnosed with end-stage renal disease, he was shipped here to Boise because the intensive treatment he needed to stay alive was not available up there. Upon his release, finally from the hospital, he would need to remain here where he could get dialysis three times a week, have kidney specialists working on his case. Though his prognosis is terminal, he would need to engage in these treatments to get as much life as possible. He was in constant and excruciating pain confronted with his own mortality. He had to make a choice to remain here and try to get as much time as he could. Or if he chose to go back home to be with his family, he would not get the needed care and would quickly deteriorate and die. The hospitals discharged him to shelters, the only option for housing here, as he had no income and no family or friends in the area. We were able to place him in our program and give him the comfort and compassion he deserves and connect him to palliative care. Though he will never recover, his statement to anyone who asks is that without our program and without our dedicated and wonderful staff and without the opportunity to be as comfortable and cared for as possible during these last days, he would have never decided to fight for any extra time and would have gone quickly with his family. We cannot continue to provide this level of care that is becoming more need without expanding to our new building. The lives and health of this special portion of our vulnerable population will be left to suffer.
Okay, thanks. Jody Graham.
Good morning. Welcome. I'm Jody Graham, and I live on the central bench. I'm a real estate appraiser, have been in Boise for over 30 years. I've been an expert witness in diminution of value for residential real estate, for mold, for construction, misconstruction, for blasting for roads, for traffic, for airports. And I'm here to talk about what we know and what we don't know about external obsolescence and stigma to residential real estate. Stigma is what is happening now. It is the unknown on residential real estate. People are concerned about what's going to happen because they can't see it and they can't feel it. External obsolescence is what happens after this sanctuary is in place. The diminution of value occurs then. So, what we do know is that State Street now has over 35,000 cars a day. So, that location already experiences external obsolescence. It also has, so the homes on State Street are experiencing that as well as the properties that were behind the Salvation Army building and the commercial properties there. So, what we don't know is the homeless shelter effect on residential real estate. I called Dr. Randall Bell. He's known as the master of disaster and real estate appraisal from LA. He does, he's unaware of any homeless shelter studies on residential real estate, and he's appraised homes like Nicole Simpson, JonBenet Ramsey, the Oklahoma City bombing neighborhoods, Katrina. And he was hopeful that maybe we could bring one together and educate the entire nation on homeless shelters and residential real estate. So, what we do know is that the Ada County Assessor cannot discern stigma on the neighborhoods at this point. It's too soon, January 2021, till now. I tried to pair real estate sales in the neighborhood from the immediate neighborhood and out. We know that stigma diminishes the farther away you get, and that stigma diminishes with time. I was unable to verify any stigma damage to those properties that have sold recently. But again, we're in such a hot market, it would take a study to do that. So, without the study, it's impossible to know, and we're just bringing up imaginary figures. And when we do have a study, we will know. And what we do know is that with the study and with wisdom comes kindness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just a quick question, ma'am. So, so just so that I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is though, somebody might assert, "We don't want this in our neighborhood because of property value will be diminished." What you're saying is there's no evidence of that at this point.
Rework your question. I want to make sure I understood it.
Are you for or against this change to the neighborhood? I couldn't quite determine based on what you were sharing.
Okay, what I was sharing was that we cannot determine the diminution in value from the shelter that we've heard testimony to. That's impossible to discern without doing this study.
So, there's no evidence at this point that Interfaith Sanctuary being cited at this location would diminish somebody's property value?
Correct, without the study. Other external obsolescence studies have shown a 10% to 20% decline in value from traffic and cell towers, etc. But no one has studied a homeless shelter and its effects, so it's kind of hard to make those comments about it.
And current sales don't indicate that.
And pardon me?
And the current sales of property in the area do not indicate that.
The problem we're having is we're in such a hot market that it's hard to discern, you know, whether a homeless shelter is diminishing value or not. People are willing to live anywhere in the city at this point.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Any other?
Thank you. David Shirtlift, Jennifer Thornfield, MJ Kirby, then Paula Forni and Kathy Burney. Hello, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I'm David Shirtlift. I live at 2609 North 36th Street. I'm in the Veterans Park neighborhood, and we've lived in that house for 40 years. My first remarks are regarding the outdated congregate housing mode. In 1970, I took a job as an architect for the state of Idaho in the Hillburton Hospital Construction Program. And the head of the Department of Health proudly sent all new hires to State School and Hospital in Nampa, which had been a congregate care facility. And it had recently undergone extensive remodel to turn it into more of a residential kind of facility. The nurses there sang the praises of Dr. John Cambrery, who's headed that program. Because before the change from congregate housing, all they really had time to do is see to the physical care of the residents who were developmentally disabled. After that, they had more time to interact socially and educationally with the same residents. So, it would seem that this indicates that facility like this, which is clearly a congregate care facility, should be denied. To answer Congressman Halliburton's comment about defining congregate care, in this case, it was large dormitories of large rooms of beds, and those were all diminished into very much smaller living facilities. My next comment is about design review. I served the city council's design review committee for nine years, chaired it for seven. In that process, we had some various successful ordinances that were passed. One was the Capitol Boulevard ordinance, and the other was the landscape ordinance, both of which are now in effect in the city. And both of those were heavily involved with citizen and property owner participation. And, and we believe that that led to the really substantial success of those projects. In this case, our design review committee probably would have denied this application and would have upheld the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial on the basis, first of, this is not a declining neighborhood. And secondly, consideration of the volume of testimony of neighbors involved. So, that, that's probably how that our design review committee would have acted in that case.
Time. Sir, your time's up. If you want to give a wrap-up sentence, you're welcome.
Okay, no, I would just urge the denial or upholding the P&amp;Z commission's denial.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, a quick question.
Yep. Sir, will you take a question? Would you take a question from the council member?
First, thank you for the promotion to Congressman. I think I'd rather be on City Council, though.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you called me Congressman earlier. I'm going to stick with City Council. My, my question, you talked a little bit about congregate shelter. I asked this question earlier. And so, when we're looking at this piece of property and this proposal, what does it take to get this to a design that fits within the needs of your definition of best practices? Is it a certain, is it, is it all individual rooms? Is it a certain amount of people? Is it no shared space? Like, what's, what's the definition where this gets to where it needs to be?
That's well said. The, the lack of shared space and, and the, just the population density in such a space, I think contributes to the idea of congregate housing. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, do you think that is helpful? I'm trying to figure out, is there, when do you hit the tipping point? Is it 200 and then 205 is the tipping point? Is it 100 and then 105 is the tipping point? Like, from your, from the research that you've done through what you've done with design review, when does it get to the point where it becomes a large congregate shelter that's no longer best practices?
I think that the idea that the state of Idaho in the late 60s went away from congregate housing in all of their facilities, State Hospital North, State Hospital South, and State School and Hospital in Nampa. Now, all of those originally had the idea of, of large populations in, in large dorm type of rooms. And so, they, it was determined that the population density was, was the problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We got MJ, nope, sorry, Jennifer Thornfield, then MJ Kirby, Paula Forni, Kathy Burney, and Karen Smith.
Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Jennifer Thornfield, and I live in a condo on 15th and River with my 13-year-old daughter and two little dogs. I work from home as an engineer. I am not an expert in community planning or homelessness. I'm not savvy about zoning permits or public safety. I am an expert in living adjacent to homeless shelters. 500 feet to the north of my front door is Interfaith Sanctuary's location. 700 feet to the south is River of Life. My home faces River Street and is a main thoroughfare between River of Life and Corpus Christi. I'm in my home about 21 hours each day, more if I don't make it to the gym. I walk my dogs in unpredictable intervals between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM. I check my mail, take out my trash, pick up Amazon packages. I'd say I'd go into my neighborhood seven times per day. I've lived there for two years, so adjusting for travel, that's a sample size of 4,000 opportunities to experience living within 700 feet of hundreds of our unhomed population. When hyperbolic opposition testimony became ubiquitous assault on my social media feed, I tried to mitigate fantasies of danger and mayhem via Facebook dialogue, but to no avail. So, here's my chance. I have not seen one needle, condom, human waste, or the like in my walkabouts. Nothing has been stolen from my front porch or out of my garage despite opportunities to do so. I keep Amazon very busy. While out walking my dogs, I have not been catcalled, whistled at, or approached. Granted, that makes sense when it comes to me, but my gorgeous teenage daughter hasn't been either. Sometimes people walk by talking to themselves. Mostly, it's someone blue-tinging a conversation into earbuds. Sometimes it's not harmless either way. Thrice, I've stepped out and someone has been sitting on my stairs that lead to the sidewalk. I'm quick to invite them to stay for as long as they like to rest, recharge. In all cases, they've quickly apologized and left. My dogs enjoy meeting the neighbors, home and unhome alike. A few times, people have told me that the kindness of these little canines has given them something to live for or hope for. One man who appeared homeless offered me his parka when I mistook sunshine for warmth and went outside jacketless. These are some anecdotes from my 4,000 or so data points. Most days, there's nothing to report. No impacts to my day or night. My property value has skyrocketed. The dogs are socialized. My daughter and I feel safe, and the only blight on my block are the geese. Don't get me started on that. My expert opinion is this. When shelters like Interfaith are doing the work they do, people have their needs met, food, water, sleep, security, but also family, friendship, connection, counseling, art, outreach, achievements, work, goals. When people have their needs met, they contribute to a positive homeostasis. I know this. I live this. I will miss my neighbors from Interfaith when they move to the new location, and I'm a bit concerned about what their absence will mean. But I know their neighbors will eventually come to see them as I do. Just humans doing their best to make it through the day without being, causing, or inviting trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. MJ Kirby. Then Paula Forni, Kathy Burney, Karen Smith, and Scott Burney.
My name's Marita MJ Kirby, and this thing's not doing what it's supposed to do. I live right off of State and Pierce Park. I grew up in Denver. I've lived in Chicago. I've lived in San Francisco. Colchester is considered one of the safest neighborhoods in Boise, and often I have taken late-night walks with no concern. A homeless shelter in the vicinity would change that and much more. Just the rumor of this shelter made Tom feel he needed to close his farmer's market on 40th and State. So, we've already lost a small business. There are different forms of homelessness, each with unique needs. Sometimes shelters are forced to lump these groups together. You have addicted individuals who have not hit bottom. There are mentally ill, within which there are also subgroups. There are many who just simply choose to be homeless, and there are those who are trying to escape homelessness. Could a guarantee be made the Salvation Army building would be reserved for those who want to and can help themselves, creating a criteria agreed upon by the Colchester residents? I am all for helping people who are proactive in helping themselves, but I am not in favor of watching my neighborhood put in danger by housing those who can't care or choose not to care. I feel the same about the camping village that was downtown. Feces, trash, no regard for property is not the way for them to achieve their goals. What happened downtown will happen in Colchester. Any person thinking Colchester will be immune is naive. The evidence here, and the evidence is here and in every major city. Those involved who think their plan will not impact Colchester negatively should experiment with their own neighborhoods first. There are successful programs in cities. It's time the cities reached out to each other, sharing what does and doesn't work. They would save time, money, and help more people. That discussion is for another meeting. Making the same mistakes over and over is not the answer. Putting another Band-Aid on this issue by ruining Colchester is not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Forni. Oh, there you are. Hello. Then Kathy Burney, Karen Smith, Scott Burney, and Frances Rosera.
Okay, hi.
Hi there.
I'm Paula Forni. I live in the Tavoli Gardens area, which is in the Lake Harbor area. The claim by Interfaith Sanctuary, the P&amp;Z denial of their application to open a large, low-barrier homeless shelter in a residential neighborhood was not supported by substantial and competent evidence is truly false. Next slide. We have, maybe I'm not, did we do it right? Okay. In comparison to the location where Interfaith Sanctuary is currently located, very low police call volumes originate from the half-mile radius surrounding the West Street location. The following map selected selects shows the type of police calls that are made. With the West State Street proposal location on the left and the current IFS location on the right, this map shows calls related to violent crimes with a high concentration surrounding IFS. The next slide, okay. This map shows alcohol and narcotic violations at both locations with a high concentration surrounding IFS, even compared to the bars present in the State Street location in the radius. Property crime is one of the few impacts emergency shelters have on surrounding areas. It's been reviewed by academic literature. Ridgeway's 2018 study found a significant increase in property crime to residential areas in, from homeless shelters. In fact, it's a 46% increase within 330 feet of a new shelter and a 9% increase within 1,300 feet.
Madam Mayor, quick question. Do we? Madam Mayor, quick question. Do we, is this cited anywhere? Where, who are you referring to with this study?
It's the Ridgeway's 2018 study. I think you can find it on the internet.
Thank you.
Conversely, they found that in commercial areas, the rates of breaking in entry were 34% lower surrounded, if they were surrounded by a homeless shelter, an emergency shelter. They speculated that this could be due to the financial ability of businesses to invest in security systems. Unlike the businesses who can afford security systems, the 330 feet and the 1,300 feet radiuses surrounding proposed locations are primary residential, and many of these are very, very low income. The next slide. There, okay. Here are photos of the nearest neighbors to the proposed facility. Riley's Trailer Park to the southeast, southwest of the facility shares a fence line with the proposed location, and it's 20 feet from the building. Across the street is another group of trailers and Valor Point. These are already vulnerable neighbors and neighborhoods, and we ask them to carry a tremendous burden if Interfaith Sanctuary is approved for this location. As shown in the previous testimony, they will have to deal directly with increased police calls and police present, as Chief Lee clearly stated, that the move from west downtown to the new location would have. They'll have to deal with an increase in sirens, and this will have a direct negative consequence to these extremely vulnerable people in these neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Bernie. And then Karen Smith, Scott Bernie, Frances Rosera, if you, if you're ready to come on up, that'd be great.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Bernie, and I live in the Collester neighborhood. Just because C2 zoning can be conditionally allowed for use does not mean it should be. A conditional use is to evaluate how a type of use is or is not in harmony with the existing land uses in the area to determine if the use may or may not be compatible. It is not how you can try to force the use to be compatible, which appears to be the case with this application, because the evidence in the city's record for current shelter location shows there is very limited ability to mitigate the adverse effects caused by human behavior. And the additional capacity of the State Street building will simply intensify the impacts for my neighborhood. The instantly recognizable lack of compatibility with an area that is predominantly residential cannot be mitigated, nor can conditions ensure that the health and safety risks do not adversely affect the economic viability of the existing businesses, because the record shows this type of use can deter customers from frequenting businesses. Overturning the commissioner's decision will knowingly expose the area of the city to higher health and safety risks than what currently exist, rather than maintaining or reducing the public's exposure to risk. This is not good governance. As an aside, I just wanted to say that our neighborhoods are not laypeople. We are proud citizens of Boise, concerned about the safety of our families, our neighbors, and especially the children in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Smith.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Karen Smith, and I live in the Sycamore neighborhood, which is a short walk across Taft Street to the Veterans Park neighborhood. And in fact, I can walk to the current, or the proposed shelter site in about five minutes from my front porch. I don't have any affiliation either with the Interfaith Sanctuary, other than I donate to them, or to any of the neighborhood organizations, other than I live there. I'm speaking for myself and on behalf of folks who find themselves unhoused in our city, and I support the approval of the proposed location. In my written testimony earlier, I outlined some ideas for some incentives and compensations the city could offer neighborhoods that are in the position of taking on a shelter or a low-income housing project. And I won't repeat those because I did discuss those at length in my letter. But I'm speaking out because I have kind of a unique perspective as a lifelong citizen of Boise. I've lived in many neighborhoods in Boise. I primarily was raised in the swanky neighborhoods and foothills. But I currently now by choice have lived in the Sycamore neighborhood for 23 years. Where I specifically have some insight is that my father used to own a building where Hotel 20, Hotel 43 now stands there near the Grove, which was demolished in urban renewal back in the 70s. And that was about the time, too, that the rescue mission, the Boise Rescue Mission, which was the homeless shelter in town, also moved because of the same reason, to Front Street. And I witnessed how the Broadway Chindon Connector was built and how the city changed dramatically in that time. And I would say that one unintended consequence of the connector being built was that it created a very natural shelter for people that had been sleeping out or needed a way to get out of the elements, that suddenly we had a very visible place where we saw a congregation of people who were homeless. And it really brought it to the attention of the city. We started noticing more homeless people in the library and other places. And we saw many versions of approaches to try to fix it, which included the community house, which ultimately failed, which was the city's attempt at creating, addressing the homeless problem that was taken over by the rescue mission. And full disclosure, my husband worked for the rescue mission for a while. He also worked as a social worker for the Terry Riley Clinic. So I do have a little insight there. I'm not completely just shooting from the hip. So what I saw happen was, out of the blue, by the grace of God, Interfaith Sanctuary arrived and did an amazing job, and Corpus Christi House, of addressing this situation.
Karen, your time's up. Would you like to give a final sentence?
Yes, I would. And I would just like to say, I have had no reason in watching their history to distrust them in any way. They have risen to every challenge that has been put in their path since 2005. And I am trusting them to move into my neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott. Great, welcome. Then we've got Frances Rosera, Elaine Garrus, Nancy Albert, and Fred Hauptman.
My name's Scott Bernie, and I live in the Veterans Park neighborhood. Boise City Code Section 11030413 covers exceptions. The code shown here specifies that the purpose is to allow conditioned uses that are of equal or lesser impact than the, that are of equal or lesser impact than the allowed use and benefit the immediate community. This applies to both general and specific exceptions. Mr. Wardle stated that the uses planned on the R1C zone section of the property would be allowed in R1C so that the exception is a non-issue. Even if we take at face value that the entire site should not be considered a shelter home, let's look more closely at the uses on the over 25% of the site-zoned R1C. Not to be dismissed as just an outbuilding, this section includes the proposed day shelter, replacing access to Corpus Christi, and it includes the outdoor congregation area for over the 200 shelter guests. It includes both the garbage enclosure servicing the entire site, which has the potential to generate odor or pest issues, and the large bike storage area, and finally, the small play area serving 50 to 75 children. Based on the large population size, all of these uses are much higher intensity and impact than allowed single-family uses. I also note that as a split-zone parcel, an exception will not be required under code for any development proposal on this parcel. So for this parcel, even a by-right use in a C2 zone would have to also pass judgment by the same CUP criteria this proposal is subject to. Here is a list of all the allowed and continually allowed uses in an R1C. As a reminder, no shelter homes are permitted in an R1C zone at all. We've highlighted childcare uses as an example of how increased intensity of use comes within increased requirements. Daycare centers over six children or group homes over 12 children require conditional use permits. Larger daycare centers come with additional restrictions to accommodate the higher intensity of use, including minimum play area size, which this proposal does not comply with. While some of these allowed uses may not be an ideal fit, such as a major utility, it is hard to see how a shelter home could even, could ever have equal or lesser impact than any of these uses. Absolutely none of the allowed uses in R1C, whether with or without a CUP, would generate either the amount of immediate impacts like noise or the amount of broader impacts like crime, concentration of poverty, and loss of economic opportunity, as would a large shelter home. And neither the shelter home nor the specific uses on the back half acre will benefit the immediate community at all, whereas many of the less intuitive allowed uses would. There are absolutely no conditions which could proactively eliminate the increased crime, and certainly not the intrinsic impact of adding over 205 impoverished residents to an already impoverished neighborhood. You must uphold P&amp;Z's decision and deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Frances Rosera.
Frances Rosera, oh, Frances Rosera, Collester neighborhood. My daughter and my four grandkids, 19 months to 11 years.
Frances, we can hear you well, but I'm not sure if.
With the mask?
No, no, no. I just, I'm not sure if you're talking into the mic. You've got a great voice. We can hear you up here, but I'm not sure about everybody behind you.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Should I start over?
Go ahead.
Okay. Frances Rosery. I am Collester neighborhood. My daughter and my four grandkids, 19 months to 11 years, live less than one football field from the proposed site. Prior to COVID, I volunteered at the sanctuary for over 10 years. I support causes to help the homeless with time, money, and supplies. Prior to 2013, Boise City Code included very specific language for a conditional use permit to ensure the surrounding property interests were protected. The code used the term justification and described the permit as, quote, "conditional uses by definition possess characteristics such to require review and appraisal by the commission to determine whether or not the use would cause any damage, hazard, nuisance, or other detriment to persons or property in the vicinity," unquote. This language was replaced with the broad statement, sorry, of possible adverse impacts. But just because the specific descriptive words have been removed, thus making the required analysis less transparent, the sound reasoning necessary to determine if property interests will be protected did not vanish. Evidence in the record currently shows damage, hazard, nuisance, and other detriment to persons or property has been occurring in the vicinity of the existing sanctuary. This won't magically go away by relocating the shelter somewhere else, as the ability to condition human behavior is severely limited. The intensity of this proposed use for a predominantly residential area will create frequent opportunities for residents to be exposed to public safety and nuisance activities and violations, such as discarded drug paraphernalia, public intoxication, public urination and feces, and other indecent behaviors. Records show these nuisance activities have been happening for the properties near the sanctuary location currently. Also, the intensity of this use will subject the properties adjacent to the proposed location with excessive noise, offensive language, and large amounts of secondhand smoke from cigarettes. The neighborhood as a whole will be subject to a significant increase in disruptive activity 24 hours a day, as documented by the high level of first responder activity this type of use creates. Records clearly show this type of use creates both private and public nuisance impacts. Therefore, the ability to ensure that the use is compatible with other uses and that the character of the neighborhood is maintained in order to protect property interests is not possible, regardless of the ability to condition an approval.
Frances, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Elaine Garrus. Nancy Albert. And Fred, I'm not sure if it's Hortman or Hauptman. Hauptman.
Madam Mayor and City Council, thank you. My name is Elaine Garrus, and I live in the Collester neighborhood. I listened to all the testimony presented to the P&amp;Z Commission and waited in vain to hear a comprehensive plan from the representatives of Interfaith Sanctuary or IFS. Surely, they must have considered all the details needed to make the proposed 205-person, low-barrier, 24-hour shelter a success. The nearby residential and small-business neighbors have every right to expect a well-thought-out plan from the developer of a high-density building with a frequent turnover of guests. The planned parking capacity for guests and employees is unrealistically low. Neighbors mentioned the vehicles that park on the streets close to the current IFS shelter. Interfaith replied that those vehicles belong to individuals who might choose to sleep in them and not at the shelter, and they are not responsible for them. This is true, but developers are rightly held to realistic parking standards. As proposed, it leaves a residential area having to deal with non-residents using parking that is now utilized by the neighborhood. A neighbor cited the Boise City Animal Code, which requires a non-commercial license for any household that harbors more than four dogs or five cats, or a maximum of 10 animals. The code stipulates all dogs must be licensed, neighbors must give written permission, and other rules. Since IFS allows guests to bring service animals with them, and even if only 10% have animals at the 205-person limit, the maximum number will be exceeded. Interfaith touted the improvements plan for the bus stop that sits in front of the State Street location. A neighbor pointed out that the bus stop across the street would get more use, since that is the side of the street that leads downtown. He asked if Interfaith planned to do the same improvements to it. It was plain that not considered this basic fact. I would feel more confident of IFS's ability to be a responsible neighbor if I had not witnessed many important details that had been overlooked. We are asked to have a little faith in Interfaith, but that's just a catchy little phrase that until real work goes into planning for and mitigating potential problems. Instead of recognition of possible problems and willingness to mitigate concerns, the neighbors heard accusations of their lack of empathy for the unhoused and emotional statements in which IFS praised itself. The great majority of area residents expressed support for Interfaith's mission. They simply questioned the proposed location. I urge you to deny this appeal and to uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's well-reasoned five-to-one decision to deny Interfaith's application. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Albert. And Fred, you're up here. Paul Gale, perhaps, on Willow Lane. And then I think we'll get through Eleanor Cheehe and Gretchen Hoyt, and then we'll break for lunch.
Nancy Albert, and I live at Harbor Lane area. Applicant stated, "Trust us, we'll have a good plan." The applicant, not having provided any security and safety information to show sufficient mitigation of adverse impacts and undue burdens. First tries to split hairs on terminology, then say those plans are confidential. Knowing the weakness of those claims, the applicant then resorts again to platitudes and hollow inadmissible claims. The applicant states attempts to have us believe that they will have good safety, security plans, even though the record shows no meaningful actions towards that, saying, quote, "Even before submitting its application, Interfaith Sanctuary had developed and implemented comprehensive safety and security policies for its current River Street location." And that, excuse me, "These policies were developed in consultation with global-recognized experts, that those same security industry leaders have been engaged in development of detailed safety and security policies for this new location." Aside from the applicant's purported plans for their current site now being inadmissible, as they weren't included in the record reviewed by the P&amp;Z, it is mystifying why the applicant did not want to include them as part of the record. It is perhaps, as OPH leader testified, that these purported plans might have to change and might have to be more extensive, or that these are the plans that led the applicant to release a guest within applicant's words, "profound mental illness, which caused horrific actions and unthinkable results." In lieu of these additional information on. actions and unthinkable results." In lieu of these additional information on safety and security, the applicant then wishes us to believe that, quote, "Interfaith Sanctuary takes the security of its neighborhood seriously." Yet, if this were true, why were the numerous requests for security and safety information from the public agencies and others over an 11-month period not meaningfully responded to? Why were no security and safety plans provided for review of otherwise included in the record? It is impossible to trust that the applicant's comments regarding neighborhood safety and security, as they are contradictory. In a neighborhood meeting, the applicant's executive director first says, "We're not going to leave the problem outside. The outside is as important to us as the inside, if it's our neighborhood too. And we promise you that we will do everything we can to protect the value of your neighborhood and to protect the safety of your neighborhood." She later contradicts herself, saying that "they are not in the business of securing an entire neighborhood, so what can we believe?" Simply put, the record has no meaningful information that shows that adverse effects on properties in the vicinity will be sufficiently mitigated. Hollow promises and empty words does not change the fact.
Thank you. Fred Helpman? Or did you tell me it was Hortman? I'm sorry. Did I, did you tell me it was Hortman, and then I just said it wrong?
I'll pass.
Fred, we'll go with Fred.
I'm Fred Helpman. I live at 5075 West Alamos Street. Now, I've lived there 10 years. We had a crack house at 5021, and I fought seven years with the city police, the fire department, the dog catcher, code compliance. I was concerned about a mobile home parked against the fence, that it would start a fire and burn the house down. And after seven years, it did happen. The gal that was living in there, it was a crack house, she set the motorhome on fire and almost burned the house down. Finally, the place sold, and I got rid of the problem of a crack house next to me. So, the city police, I, you know, I don't have much store in solving problems with them. And then also, three years ago, I saw a person that was walking through the neighborhood. He didn't belong there. You could just tell he didn't belong here. And he, later on, I saw him, he had a red hoodie, and I traveled a lot, quite a bit, and I come back and I found out this guy, he'd been living down by the river, homeless, and he'd gotten into a housing project, and he stabbed four children and killed a four-year-old. And I don't want those people in our neighborhood. And lastly, I'll make an easy vote for you guys. Ada County Highway, or Ada County now has a conditional use permit applied for a winery in Ada County, and their prerequisite is that 75% of the landowners next to it have to agree with it. And if you apply that to this, it's an easy vote for you.
Thank you, Eleanor. Then after Eleanor, we'll wrap with Gretchen Hoyt. Welcome.
My name is Eleanor Cheehe. I am the Board Secretary for Interfaith Sanctuary Housing Services. We have challenges serving the aging population on fixed incomes who are being forced out of their housing and ending up in the shelter system. They are, these are retired neighbors now living on their social security, which is no longer enough in the current housing market. They have health issues, mobility issues, and they are scared. We are fortunate to have the hotel shelter where we move them into rooms to keep them safe and offer them a place to be day and night. We are able to bring home health, hospice, and senior activities to this program. Our case managers assist them with transportation to their medical appointments, help manage their medications, and we have created a community for them to feel loved and supported. One of these guests is an elderly woman with some very significant health issues. Staff helps her to bathe, make sure she is coming out of her room, and joining the families with children for meals. She is a beloved member of this hotel village and has become the grandma to many of the children living in the hotel shelter. She has gone from being sad and frightened to finding purpose and connection with the other seniors and families we are serving. We could not serve her and others like her in our River Street Shelter. It is one-third the size of the Salvation Army store and cannot provide the space and privacy to receive home health and stay in for 24 hours a day. I have to tell you that before COVID, our guests in the River Street Shelter were living in bunk beds three feet apart and 165 people in a 10,000-square-foot building. That, that's as tight as the fire marshal would allow us to poke them in there. The Salvation Army store would provide space for a small medical clinic and a senior dorm with activities and programming. We have a partnership with the Family Practice Residency to provide medical care at the shelter when needed. They would continue to serve at the Salvation Army store if we moved there. This past year, we had three guests at our hotel shelter with terminal illness, one of them a dad with a wife and two young children. Hospice was brought in to care for these guests. They received comfort, care, and peace as their lives came to an end. They were surrounded by our loving guests, and the father, before passing, thanked us for giving him peace of mind as he was leaving his family, knowing that they would be safe and supported. These are services that need to be available for our growing population of seniors and chronically ill in the homeless community. The recent conversions of assisted living centers to apartment buildings is putting a strain on the homeless shelters. We need to be able to move the shelter into the Salvation Army store on State Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I got a question for Eleanor.
Sure. Eleanor, will you take a question from the council member?
Eleanor, you're on the board of Interfaith.
What's that?
You're on the board of Interfaith.
I am not employed at Interfaith. I am a volunteer.
Are you on the board of Interfaith?
I am on the board, yes. I'm the Board Secretary. I am the longest-serving board member on the shelter. So, I've been there since we were borrowing space in churches in 2006 and '07.
Eleanor, just a second, ma'am, just a second.
Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Almost.
I can repeat if you want me to also. For some reason, I think my mic is louder.
Much louder. So, my question is, I'm trying to understand if you're saying that the move to Interfaith's potential new location at the Salvation Army is going to solve the need for what the hotels are currently using, and that Interfaith will be able to better, better serve the needs of its people all in one location versus at that location and hotels?
The hotel space is being paid for with federal money from the COVID, to relieve COVID problems. That money runs out this summer, as I understand it. And we have more people in our shelter and the hotels than we can poke back into our River Street Shelter.
Okay, thank you, Eleanor. My mic's working again.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Eleanor. Eleanor, Eleanor, one more. Not quite. This time, it's from Councilwoman Willetts over on your left.
Yeah. Eleanor, and you might be able to answer this. So, Jody, can you help level set how many people were you were serving in the shelter prior to COVID? And then, the max that you would be serving at this new location?
We had 165 people in our River Street Shelter before COVID. We separated them out, put some in the, in the hotels, and we have, as people, as more families became homeless because they got priced out of their houses, we have more, there are more people than, than we can fit back into the shelter. I'm not sure.
I think there's just the second-
I don't know how many are in the hotel.
There's just the second part of the question, which is 205.
So, there's, we actually currently at the emergency shelter serve 175 guests right now, when there's overflow need. 164 in the building, and then an outside tent and a portable classroom. And then an additional 100 guests are at the hotel, and those are the families with children, seniors, and medically fragile.
And the new location would have a maximum?
Two oh five. Ninety-six being families with children, 34 being medically fragile, and then private rooms for 24. It's probably complicated, but it designates for different populations of service, the largest population being families with children.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, I was wrong. We're actually going to take a break now. And I pass over Paul by accident, so we'll start with Paul. I think it's Gail, but I'm not positive. So, great. And then, so we'll start with Paul and followed by Gretchen, and then I've got this next list, and we are back in 45 minutes. See you soon. And then I've got this next list and we are back in forty five minutes. Great. See you soon.
Welcome back, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started. For those of you that are on Zoom, I'm just going to repeat something, and I'm going to read it again, that I said this morning. We are first finishing up the list of folks in person, and then we'll move into the folks that are on Zoom. But there's a live stream of this meeting and all of the public hearings for the Interface Sanctuary via live stream, or you can play it back at the City of Boise Public Meetings YouTube channel. So because of the number of people wanting to testify on Zoom, we're asking that if you aren't a party of record or you don't wish to speak, that you watch the hearing on the YouTube channel. And those of you that are a party of record, once I've called upon you, or the clerk has, and you're done, and we'll be removing you from Zoom and asking you to go over to the YouTube channel to watch. And we're doing this so that we can better manage the flow of folks that still need to be called on, on Zoom. And for those of you on Zoom that aren't parties of... For those of you on Zoom that aren't parties of record, the clerk will note that you're not a party of record and remove you from the Zoom. So if suddenly you're no longer on Zoom, know that that was done intentionally, and you can go over to the YouTube channel to watch the proceedings from there. And with that, we will pick up with Paul.
In your interview?
Awesome.
Perfect.
So as we get into the hallway.
George is wondering where you did.
Yeah, do you remember what number you were when you signed up? Oh, there you are. So we've got two and six, so eight before you. Welcome back, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started. For those of you that are on Zoom, I'm just going to repeat something, and I'm going to read it again, that I said this morning. We are first finishing up the list of folks in person, and then we'll move into the folks that are on Zoom. But there's a live stream of this meeting and all of the public hearings for the Interface Sanctuary via live stream, or you can play it back at the City of Boise Public Meetings YouTube channel. So because of the number of people wanting to testify on Zoom, we're asking that if you aren't a party of record, or you don't wish to speak, that you watch the hearing on the YouTube channel. And those of you that are a party of record, once I've called upon you, or the clerk has, and you're done, and we'll be removing you from Zoom and asking you to go over to the YouTube channel to watch. And we're doing this so that we can better manage the flow of folks that still need to be called on, on Zoom. And for those of you on Zoom that aren't parties of for those of you on Zoom that aren't parties of record, the clerk will note that you're not a party of record and remove you from the Zoom. So if suddenly you're no longer on Zoom, know that that was done intentionally, and you can go over to the YouTube channel to watch the proceedings from there. And with that, we will pick up with Paul. Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Paul Guile, and I live on Willow Lane, adjacent to the Willow Lane Park.
Paul, I'm going to ask that you just bring the mic a little closer, probably, so we can hear you better.
Okay.
Thanks.
On this issue, I have many hopes. I hope that this appeal will fail, but it is important that it fail for the right reasons, namely that its size and nature make it incompatible with existing residential uses in the area, and the well-known negative effects cannot be realistically contained. I hope that you can see the obvious, that with the existing laws, police manpower, and city commitment, this use has proven itself to be thoroughly unmanageable. The effects near the 16th Street location have spoken for themselves for many years. I hope you realize the unique aspect of this use is that even the most well-intended applicant will not have the tools or authority to mitigate virtually any of the damaging effects of the use. While the significant needs associated with this use already fall heavily on city services, the indirect costs will fall even more heavily on innocent, unrelated home and business owners. I hope that you realize that allowing this project to go forward, you will be clearly threatening the livability and economic future of an already struggling area. Should this facility be built, it will without doubt cast a very large and very wet blanket over the future of this area for decades. I hope that even the most cynical can see the good Interfaith has done and hopes to do. The most cynical may only see the three main events. A wealthy developer gets the land, Boise City moves the most problematic piece of their homeless issue away from downtown, and an already struggling area is left to deal with the fallout. I hope that everyone understands that the only way to manage a large and/or permanent mistake is to avoid making that mistake in the first place. This is a crucial moment, and perhaps your only opportunity to protect dozens of businesses and hundreds of residents from the admittedly well-meaning, but perhaps overly ambitious applicant. Please do not help create something, more of something already known to be beyond anyone's ability to mitigate. By the time this mistake becomes obvious, it will be much too late. The name on the sign will say Interfaith, but in the minds of many, this city council's name should be on there as well. I hope that you know that many proposing this plan are coming from a place of fear, and rightly so. Our potential losses are quite significant, thoroughly researched, accurately documented, and ultimately very well-founded. I hope that denying this appeal will add new thinking, new urgency, new focus to Interfaith's efforts with the goal of ultimately producing effective solutions. Having said that, these solutions should never include the widespread collateral damage predicted with this facility. Thank you.
Thank you. And Gretchen Hoyt. Then after Gretchen, we have Casey Zimansky, Kelsey Burke, Barrett Norman, and then Nisa Jensen.
Gretchen Hoyt, 891 North Lander Street. Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. We are at a critical crossroads in Boise's growth. The overwhelmingly negative response from the Neighbors to Interfaith Alliance's CUP is due mostly to the low-barrier portion of the guests that Interfaith serves. This ferocious resistance will be the case anywhere a large, congregate, low-barrier shelter is proposed. The only workable solution that seems possible is to separate those needing low-barrier sheltering from the majority of the homeless population. Interfaith Alliance has provided a much-needed service to Boise for over 16 years, but its current operating model is outdated. That model is the impetus to many unmitigatable events. The CUP denial must stand. But Madam Mayor and City Council, denial of the CUP is a blessing to all of us. It is the opportunity that we need to create a sustainable shelter system. We must take the time to form a system that continues to keep Boise an inviting destination city for decades to come versus the chaos and disorder that other cities have because they didn't have the time to guide the growth of the homeless population. The journey to creating this shelter in Boise started in 1880 at the Poor Farm, out by what is now Cynthia Mann School. Over the next 142 years, more organizations that can be listed in three minutes sprang to life, aiding the downtrodden. In recent years, Andrew Beck, the Corporation for Supportive Housing, Dr. Alquist, the Pacific Companies, just to name a few, have also brought their knowledge and skills in an effort to end homelessness. While I was researching this issue, a national expert told me clearly, Boise is way ahead of most other cities in the nation in the effort to deal with their homeless issue. Madam Mayor, City Council, now is the time for your decisive and strong leadership. All parties needed to design a workable, sustainable shelter system are already here, working diligently to end the homeless issue. That very complicated work is coordinated by your own Our Path Home. They have created an amazing public and private partnership of almost every organization in town involved in this issue. The combined talents, caring, and philanthropy of these groups and individuals can surely find a way to build a shelter system that works for everyone in Boise and possibly beyond. A person who has their finger firmly on the pulse of Boise told me it may be too late in the game for these ideas, but the optimist in me sees an unprecedented assembly of groups and sensibilities all aligned to create a shelter system that works for Boise as a whole. Madam Mayor, residents of Boise, Interfaith Alliance needs our help to fulfill their mission. The City of Boise needs to be firmly guiding Interfaith Alliance. Interfaith Alliance should not guide the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, quick question.
Oh, sure. Gretchen, would you take a question?
Let me guess, congregate shelter.
No. Well, maybe. I don't know. So there's lots of different elements that would create a better shelter system. One of the ones that I think that you talked about at the very beginning was separating low barrier from other types of shelters. Am I understanding that correctly? And so can you explain that a little bit more?
The only way I can explain it is to tell you what's in my mind. I sent you guys all letters. Over 100 of them went out about my stupid plan.
Would you, can you just, I'm sorry. Sorry. I know it can be hard, but it's.
So what I see isn't necessarily five shelters. All of my reading shows that money and staffing are an issue for that number. But I do believe that there are, please, neighbors, don't shoot me in the back. I do believe there is a lot of use for the State Street site. It's large enough for families and cooking and tattying and dog grooming and whatever. I mean, I think, Jody, I think your ideas are wonderful. It's just too big and too much and too fast to try to stand up safely. As a nurse who dealt with many homeless issues over 30 years, putting a woman and children under the same roof with someone who wants to sleep rough, they don't necessarily want to be there. It's not safe and comfortable for them. So my thought is, at this point, since we wouldn't have to go through all this, move the bulk of people out to State Street, build a building that works, but not all of them. Let the low-barrier sheltering people who need it stay where they are. Sounds like the Miller family will allow that to happen for a little while in that location, so that decreases the population on State Street, lets the people who want to sleep rough, they're already there. They know that area. Corpus Christi is there, and Catch is there. Take the time to then figure out where that particular population would stay, but separate them from those that are not wanting to sleep rough, to use another term. That's my thought.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Now we've got Casey Zimansky.
And could you please pull up the slide deck titled CP 21 dash? Yep, perfect.
And then you've got a clicker there.
Perfect. So my name is Casey Zimansky. I live on Innis Street in Veterans Memorial Neighborhood. I want to challenge the testimony by an Interfaith employee that any opposition to the project is based on discrimination and fear of the unfamiliar. The record includes testimony opposing the project from people deeply familiar with Interfaith practices and so compassionate to the guest population that they've spent years as employees. These are not the voices of intolerance. Sarah Christensen, who worked at Interfaith for six years, provided two written testimonies that object to this application. She emphasized that moving the shelter far from downtown is not good for the homeless community because it would move them far from already established social services, as well as their community of homeless residents who spend their time downtown. She questioned whether the city would be providing free bus rides to the entire homeless community. She asked, what happens at night when the buses are no longer running? Are law enforcement officers going to be responsible for shuttling them around? She asked that many guests of Interfaith, sorry, she stated that many guests of Interfaith have addiction issues or serious mental health issues, and that some of the guests bring chaos to their environment. The current location is already familiar with these issues and has experience in responding to these problems. She asked, quote, "Why would this chaos be spread to other surrounding areas of Boise when it does not need to be?" But perhaps the most alarming is the anonymous testimony of a former IFS employee that was read to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They stated, quote, "The response of IFS leadership to many situations has been unacceptable," end quote. They described a situation where a man with meth in his room overdosed in front of an area where children stay. IFS leadership took the man back into the shelter when he was in clear need of medical attention. Quote, "Staff was instructed to give an elderly man with severe alcoholism, who was a fall risk, hard liquor because he needed it. This resulted in several falls," end quote. They also reported that at least two registered sex offenders stayed in close proximity of children during 2020. They described older children and adults displaying abusive sexual behavior to children that included exposure to graphic sexual language, imagery of sexual intercourse, and physical sexual abuse. This type of behavior does not belong in any neighborhood. Please uphold the commission's decision. Thank you.
Now we've got Kelsey Burke, and then Barrett Norman and Nisa Jensen.
If you could open the slide, please. Thank you. Hi, my name is Kelsey Burke, and I live in the Veterans Park neighborhood. Many professionals with a lifetime of experience working with vulnerable populations question the applicant's proposal to place such an intense concentration of guests into such a vulnerable community, supporting the commission's decision to deny the CUP. While several public testimonies of opposition came from former law enforcement officers, of particular note was John Foster, with 35 years of law enforcement experience and 18 years as the chief of police of a California city. During that time, he created and implemented a CUP and a Good Neighbor Agreement of the city's first homeless shelter. He advocates for holding the guests of any homeless shelter accountable for their behavior to ensure the safety and security of both the shelter residents and the surrounding neighborhood, a reason that Planning and Zoning Commission found to be adversely impactful to the surrounding area. He questioned why the Boise Police Department would take a neutral stance in light of the adverse impacts that Interfaith causes at its current location, as well as the high police call volumes to the current facility. He also shed light on a statement made by Chief Lee that not all calls for service are crime-related, and I quote, "While that may be true, many calls for service are quality-of-life concerns. The quality-of-life call is made by a citizen who fears, who's unsafe, or feels unsafe. These type of calls can demoralize residents and businesses, and if they are not addressed, studies have shown they can increase to more serious crimes." He also said, "Unless you feel an increase in police calls for service and crimes is compatible to other uses in the neighborhood, I would encourage you to deny this application." The public comments also include at least 19 social workers, medical professionals, or those working in social service fields with years of professional experience working with the target population. Each of these professionals are opposed to the project. I have provided citations for each of these commentaries if you would like to read them. Apparently, IFS does not recognize these lay testimonies as having merit, but clearly the commission did when they denied the application. I urge you to please uphold their decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Barrett Norman. Then Nisa, and then Brian Dice, and Edward Calius.
I have slides, too. Yep, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Barrett Norman. I'm a member of the Veterans Park Neighborhood Association. I'm also a donor monthly to Catch. The purpose of Boise's Development Code requires stimulating economic opportunity and promoting diverse, inclusive communities with a variety of housing choices. However, the Planning and Zoning Committee found that this project, and I quote, "would greatly and adversely impact and endanger the character of the neighborhood and harm the retention, growth, and profitability of existing businesses," end quote. This is in addition to testimony on record that the project exacerbates housing segregation. I'd like to focus further on the impact to economic opportunity for existing residents through generational economic mobility. Our neighborhood already has greater than 30% poverty, which is 50 to 200% greater than any surrounding neighborhood, clearly showing that poverty is being segregated in our neighborhood. Poverty is coupled with a struggle for educational attainment. Having among the lowest high school graduation rates and at TAFT, among the lowest reading scores, it is clear that our neighborhood is already struggling to provide economic opportunity for our children. As a respected Pew Trust shares, quote, "Neighborhood economic segregation is linked with economic mobility. It is the degree to which neighborhoods are economically segregated that matters most." The government Opportunity Atlas Tool is a census tract level data set showing children's outcomes in adulthood at age 35, such as earning power at rates as they correlate to their parents' income, race, gender, et cetera, when they were children. This tool allows us to trace the roots of today's affluence and poverty back to neighborhoods where people grew up and identify areas where children are not rising out of poverty, areas that need more help. This tool shows us that children who grew up in households in the lowest quartile of income retain lower adult incomes in the Veterans Park and West End tract than in the surrounding downtown, North End, Sunset, and Colister neighborhoods. The concentration of poverty in Veterans Park that has been identified in the last three HUD AFFH, and that stands for Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Plan reports, is generationally reinforcing. Adding over 205 impoverished residents in our neighborhood will increase poverty to over 40%, dramatically increasing economic segregation and further reducing the economic mobility of children in this area. This is reflected in the Planning and Zoning finding that the project endangers the character of the neighborhood and damages the viability of local businesses. To allow our families to have the opportunity required by Boise Code, the IFS appeal should be denied. No simple conditions, except for placing it in a more wealthy neighborhood, can address such a dramatic risk to our children's opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Nisa Jensen, then Brian, and then Edward, and then George Herod.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Nisa Jensen. I'm here today as the official representative of the Boise Ada County Homeless Coalition. Our coalition is made up of more than 50 members, including most of the agencies and organizations in our valley that work with those experiencing homelessness. We also count in our membership numerous individuals, school representatives, faith communities, and other community organizations. Our coalition represents decades of practical expert experience in forming the best practices of our community. We are the true experts. Our purpose is to amplify the voices of the people at the heart of this issue, those experiencing homelessness. To that end, the Boise Ada County Homeless Coalition voted unanimously to support the Interfaith Sanctuary's conditional use permit. Virtually every organization or individual that works with this population on a regular basis acknowledges the need and urgency of this move for Interfaith Sanctuary. It will vastly improve their ability to provide a wide array of services and programming that will not only provide shelter, but will also aid individuals and families in finding and keeping permanent housing solutions with support, education, and training to help these folks be successful. Such a shelter site adheres to industry-accepted best-practice standards and will help our city serve our vulnerable population, which is the most important piece of this entire process, compassionate shelter for those in need. Please never lose sight of that goal. This is not a zero-sum game. You can and should approve this permit while also exploring potential, every potential option available to house folks of all income levels and needs, including any people experiencing homelessness who end up not being served by IFS. According to a recent statement from Catch, "We currently have 2,400 people who have no home at this moment in the Treasure Valley. IFS is serving but a portion of those." So of course, we and you. will continue working as hard as we can to make sure everyone is sheltered. But let's focus on mitigating the harm to the most vulnerable first. Thank you."
Thank you. Brian, the Dice, Dease, and then Edward Calius, George Herred, and then Shane Harris.
I'm Brian Deese. I live at, on Willow Lane in the Veterans Park Neighborhood Association. Interfaith claims that P&amp;Z, the P&amp;Z Commission disregarded the testimony of Boise's Fire and Police Department. This simply is not true. Even though Interfaith Sanctuary generates a high volume of emergency service calls, both departments took a neutral stance on the, on the proposed move, stating that overall citywide services would not be affected because resources would simply shift from Shoreline to State Street. This acknowledgement that an appreciable level of resources would follow Interfaith Sanctuary implies that the move would have a significant impact on the residential neighborhoods surrounding the new site. As you know, BPD recently opened a police station, substation, less than a half mile from Interfaith Sanctuary, a project which the city planning record notes was specifically to be near the sanctuary, suggesting that while patrol units can be redistributed, substation location is still an important part of the equation. This new substation is also the nearest to the proposed IFS location at nearly three miles away. Chief Lee stated in his testimony that the department had no intention of staffing the vacant substation across the street from the proposed site if Interstate, if Interfaith moves. While I believe having a permanent police presence directly across the street from the State Street location would be useful and likely will be required at some point, I also realize that staffing the substation in response to the move would challenge the notion that this CUP wouldn't impact city services. As we heard last night, fire services to Interfaith Sanctuary are provided out of Station Five currently, which includes two companies so that when one company is responding to a call, another company is still available. In contrast, Station Nine, serving the proposed shelter, has only one company and is already unable to meet a four-minute response time for portions of its service area. Inclusion of a high call, call volume facility in this area could further reduce response times when emergencies overlap. Medic services are also adequately available to the current Interfaith Sanctuary location, but there are no medic units within a four-minute response time serving the location on State Street. While a proposed condition to address this problem is to have a part-time medically trained staff member on site, to my knowledge, the qualifications of this position have not been defined yet. I also question the city's authority to enforce such a requirement, and I question the mitigation that this position can provide, working only twenty hours a week, or about three hours a day. The Interfaith Sanctuary, running out of time here, all I can say here is that I appreciate the bind that you're in with the selling of the current building and the denial of the CUP at this time, and I hope that you make the right decision and back the denial of this CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Edward. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Let me adjust this here a little bit. So my concern is with the undue burden on public transportation. And I believe that by placing those who are disadvantaged physically, mentally, and emotionally at the newly proposed IFS, IFS site will increase accidents that involve them, motorists, and cyclists. Vehicle accidents are a leading cause of death and injury to homeless citizens. In two thousand and nineteen, a San Francisco examiner of story reported the Department of Public Health citing that homeless people make up less than one percent of the city's population, but account for twenty-two percent of traffic deaths. Additionally, in, in January of two thousand and twenty-one, the Department of Public Health in Los Angeles reported that homeless account for nine percent of homeless deaths, the third-leading cause of deaths of homeless overall. Sadly, this undue burden is manifested in slowdowns, delays, and complete shutdowns. Any number of behaviors or actions by either persons experiencing homelessness or motorists can result in this, crossing against signals, crossing in the midlane, walking or cycling along the narrow shoulder, and not obeying traffic signals, poor judgment, and impairment. Add in nighttime driving and inclement weather, and this risk increases immensely. These injuries, deaths, and slowdowns will result if the permanent, if the permit is approved and in return, impact the daily commuting and overall public transportation and safety of all citizens of Boise. This will not just impact Boise, but the entire Treasure Valley that uses Highway Forty-four and eventually Stage Street. And then how long will citizens tolerate the homeless suffering injury or being killed and the delays and shutdowns that occur on Stage Street? Animosity towards these individuals may increase and result in targeting. These are highly probable outcomes. The concern of all safety, the concerns of safety for all is at stake and are the concerns of both sides in this process. The city has spent millions to ease the flow of traffic at major intersections on Stage Street. This action will now reverse that. If approved, this will change for the worse this vital Treasure Valley transportation corridor for the city of Boise and for those in the Treasure Valley and outside Boise that use Stage Street. I implore the City Council to uphold the, the decision of the P&amp;Z Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We got George Herred, then Shane Harris, Bobby Atchison, Geneva Ayara, and Todor Azurza.
Hi. Can you hear me? Good. My name is George Herred. I live in what was previously characterized by one of your testifiers as the Smikee Foothills. I would, I'm here to urge you to reverse the decision of P&amp;Z and support the conditional use permit for Interfaith Sanctuary. The reason's quite simple, and I haven't heard any testimony to this effect before, but I don't think there's a better alternative. If you lose the services of Interfaith Sanctuary, you wind up with people who are homeless on the streets and without any services provided to them. That's a much more unmanageable and difficult situation than the one you might have, might with a shelter on State Street. Also, I would comment that much of the testimony that we've heard in favor of denying this permit is based on fear of the unknown. And while we should clearly acknowledge fear of the unknown, we don't have to give into it. For example, earlier today, we heard that a high percentage of people who use homeless shelters are felons. Well, I don't know if that applies to guests at Interfaith Sanctuary. I've been told that it doesn't. On the other hand, we should ask some questions about that. As far as I know, not every felon is violent. Even if they are, Martha Stewart is a felon. I'd live next to her in a minute. In addition, what would be the alternative? Should we distribute felons throughout the community? Would that be a better alternative? You have to think about what is it that you're going to do if you lose the services of this charity? Now, lastly, there's been some testimony that people are concerned about the impact of this shelter on their property values. And I can certainly respect that fear. On the other hand, this proposal has been in the news and has been widely understood for months. And while there is no certainty that it will be approved, any impact that there might have been on property values should have been felt by now. And I don't think that's been the case. I think property values have continued to increase all across the city. The same is true of many of the other arguments I've heard that need to be challenged and need to be resourced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. I think it's probably, I think it's probably best for members of the staff at Interfaith Sanctuary. I don't know that George will know. But it does relate to his testimony, so.
So maybe stay up there.
We also have some, some city staff here. If you have technical questions about best practices.
Thank you. Jody, I've, I've heard some, and George said that, you know, if, if you're not allowed to have a conditional use permit and move to this location, that Interfaith will close its doors. Can you help shed some light on that concern?
The concern is timing. So currently, we have funding for the hotel.
Jody, will you pull the mic down?
I'm so sorry. City Council, Mayor McLean, Councilwoman Willis. Currently, we have funding at the hotel through CARES funding, and then we have an owner of our building that has extended us for another year lease while we go through this process. And that owner has assured us that as long as we stay with this process, this application, this building, he'll hang in there with us for us to get the remodel done. Should we have to start the process over because we couldn't get into the Salvation Army and we would have to sell that building, find a new building that's zoned, and that neighbors wouldn't be opposed to us in, in that process? At that point, we're at great risk. Because as you know, it's very hard to be welcomed in a neighborhood where you're trying to take care of homeless people.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Shane Harris, Bobby Atchison, Geneva Ayara, Todor, and then Vicky Danachuk.
Madam Mayor, real quick.
Yes.
I'm noticing a lot of folks trying to help the mayor out in managing this meeting by clearing throats and coughing. I think that that's really disrespectful, and we should leave it up to Madam Mayor to run the meeting as she sees fit, and she will let people know when their time is up. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Shane Harris. I live at three zero one nine North Thirty-Fifth Street. I also run the community garden at Taft Elementary School. I've been an on and off resident of Boise since nineteen eighty-three. The gentleman, two gentlemen ago, kind of stole my thunder because I am a public servant in the way of public safety in my past life. I spent eight years as a volunteer fireman, as a fire prevention officer, as a bicycle and skateboard shop owner. Public safety was important, so I did bike safety in three different states at numerous elementary schools, trying to keep people safe from cars, having experienced one part, one car almost taking my own life years ago. So the State Street corridor is way too dangerous for pedestrians and cyclists. So what we did is an impromptu study when we were there doing this a year ago. So traffic has only gotten worse in the last year on Stage Street. A year ago, we were there doing our crosswalk talks, or crosswalk vigils, as I would call them. When you push the button, you have twenty-one seconds. How many cars stopped? At the most was a hundred and sixty cars stopped. We were honked at, yelled at, and they were very, pedestrians were putting their lives at risk to be there, as well as the, the future pedestrian crossing there with their, all of their belongings on their back or pushing their bike across there twice a day is going to be way too dangerous. So in our study, a hundred and sixty cars would stop at any given time when we pushed the stop, uh, crossing. So in, you know, in closing, basically, we, the people of Boise, we have an opportunity to shape the future of homelessness and homeless shelters. We need to make sure that all the citizens are safe. The State, the State Street corridor is too dangerous for the most vulnerable population that we have, and we can do better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Bobby?
Good afternoon. I live in the Sunset neighborhood. My name is Bobby Atchison. Anyone who has a child understands that sometimes saying no is the right thing. The National Coalition for the Homeless is, quote, "Calling on all advocates to push for creating alternatives to large shelters." I'm here to push for better. I'm a social worker and have been for forty years, and for twenty-five years, I ran a halfway house for young adults that were coming straight out of incarceration. So they all had criminogenic issues. They had drug and alcohol addictions, mental health issues. They, many of them didn't have jobs, and some of them are on a sex offender registry. And it was my job for twenty-five years to help these folks find housing. So they were kind of the bottom of the barrel, and it was hard, but it was doable. It was doable. But the number one thing that I had to keep in mind when selecting housing was safety for that roommate or that landlord that was giving my participant that second chance that they so desperately needed. I urge the city to have the same standards when allowing a location for emergency shelter. Safety first, and then opportunity and quality of life for all residents. It's appropriate to question the absence of a security plan in IFS's conditional use request. When I went through this process, no one had to ask me for that plan. Common sense dictated that a comprehensive and detailed plan was doing my part to share with the neighbors what, what I was willing to do, what I was going to commit to do, to, to do my part to ensure their safety. Interfaith's proposal for a large, low-barrier shelter with zero residential buffer ignores many best practice principles. What are some of these principles? They are that shelters are small. Ideally, they're thirty. People are less, that they're scattered throughout the city, that there's a wide residential buffer.
Madam Mayor, where, where are you getting the best practices from? Where are you referring these? Is there a study? Is there, where are you getting these?
Yeah, if, there, there are actually quite a lot of studies, and I don't have it cited right now in my presentation, but I'd be happy to find that citing for you and, and present it. But it, it is also probably in my public record that, in the letters that I've sent.
Sure, I'll let you continue. At the very beginning, you also referenced another organization, a council, I believe.
It's called the National Coalition for the Homeless.
And is that, and that was a study that you submitted earlier. Is that correct?
It is a letter that they wrote regarding homelessness across America.
Okay, so some of that might be from there.
It is from there.
Okay.
Yes. Give me a minute to figure out.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that, that's quite all right. I'm happy to answer any questions. But as I was doing this research, that I can provide that information for you, and other, other best practice principles were separating by service needs so that you don't have families with children that are housed with folks that have mental health or addiction service needs. So City Council, you're tasked with making a critical decision about how our city will serve the unhoused. Not if they should be served. Of course, they should be served. And it is my opinion, whether it's considered professional or not, that IFS must be told no to their current plan, and then they can truly reimagine shelter. Using well-established and best practice principles instead of the antiquated congregate model that they're currently proposing, regardless of how they would like to color it, two hundred people under one roof, eight people in a room, is a large congregate, congregate shelter as defined by HUD.
I'll ask that you do a wrap-up sentence.
Yes. I'll end with this. The National Coalition said at best, "Large congregate living shelters did not work, and we should never go back to those days of addressing homelessness in that manner." Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Bobby, can I ask you a question? When you say, when you're referring to these studies or entities that say that large congregate shelters do not work, when you say do not work, what does do not work mean?
That's a really wonderful question, and I don't know that it doesn't mean that they don't work for everyone, but I think what they're talking about is efficacy. They're not as, they're not as effective at helping someone move towards a home. I, I found this in my own program, that when I put too many people together, they all had less of an opportunity to be as effective as they could be than if I helped them find their, their path to normalcy.
Okay, so, so do not work means unable to leave a situation where they would need that type of assistance to, for shelter. They would move on to their own housing. Is that what you mean?
Well, efficacy means with homelessness, the whole goal is employment and housing is, is what I. Is what I believe the goal of those who are unhoused. They want a house. And so by putting a lot of folks together in a large congregate shelter, they don't work because it takes away a person's dignity. It takes away their privacy. It takes away, and that has implications on health. It has implications on mental health. And a person is not as able to be as effective when their mental health and their safety feels like it's at risk. On KBSU, I heard a woman who ended up homeless for a night, and she slept at Interfaith Sanctuary with her shoes on. And then she chose to sleep in her car because she couldn't, it was no reflection on Interfaith. It was a reflection on large congregate sheltering.
Thank you.
Geneva Yara. And we've got Todor, Vicky Danachak, Helen Cobbler, Brooke Bates, Christina.
Hi, Geneva Yara. I live in the Veterans Park neighborhood where I own and operate a preschool, and I've owned my home for 17 years.
I can hear you well, but if you'll bring it closer than everybody behind you can hear.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
The record shows the type of use requested in this application places a significant demand on public safety resources and requires fast response times, which can be provided from the new downtown police station. This station was intentionally cited to be near the current IFS shelter with the expectation that it would be serving an area that has land uses with a high-demand population. But this application seeks to relocate this homeless shelter away from this police station, which is literally asking the city for three allowances. To waste the $4.3 million of taxpayers' money that was spent on the new police station while simultaneously seeking permission to export the health and safety risk to one of the poorest neighborhoods in the city, and to increase the cost of public safety services. That is not good governance. Good governance prevents risks and saves taxpayer dollars, whereas this would do the opposite. This application needs to be denied based on incompatible use and adverse impacts in light of present factual circumstances surrounding this request and the resulting impact on public money. A denial of this application is prudent stewardship of the taxpayers' money, as it will ensure the $4.3 million public expenditure on the new police station was reasonable, appropriate, and returns the highest benefit to public safety. Conversely, approving this application will fail to capture the $4.3 million public investment made in safety and will fail to comply with the regulations and policies set forth in Boise's Business Operations Manual for financial decisions and the city's fiscal declaration that capital improvement projects are to represent the highest and the best use of the city's resources. The public has a reasonable expectation of realizing the full benefit or the entitled return on the investment made in public safety using public money. Therefore, the highest and best use of public money expended on public safety will only result by retaining IFS in the area near the new police station. Otherwise, the additional cost for public safety will confer a special privilege on the private property owner by the need to expand the cost of government services to address the adverse impacts of this conditional use request. In addition, relocating the shelter away from the new police station is simply expecting the residents and businesses of Veterans Park neighborhood to hold the risk on their balance sheet. This is an unreasonable burden and will be a failure of the city to exercise fiduciary duty regarding the wise and efficient expenditure of public funds. It's time for us to incorporate actual experts in the search for a better location for IFS and remove the burden from those who think that testimony from a librarian is expert testimony.
Thank you. Thank you. Todor? Then on deck is Vicky Danachak, and then Helen Cobbler.
City Council, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, you mentioned that a parents' desire is to keep their kids safe and sound and far away from the worst the world has to offer. As a preschool teacher, I share the same safety concerns for our kids. Their safety is paramount in a childcare facility, but I'm afraid that if IFS relocated to our neighborhood, I will not be able to safely take children on field trips as I currently do. My concerns are based on factual studies that confirm the negative impacts the large, low-barrier congregate shelters have on residential neighborhoods. My concerns are also based on the safety issues and quality of life crimes we witness around the IFS area downtown. These issues have been already raised by their current neighbors, businesses, and developers in the Shoreline District. They requested assistance to the city complaining about the homeless and transit issues affecting the safety and business growth in their area. They consider that the shelter hinders their development plans. So I guess that there is a correlation between real estate values and proximity to shelters. Actually, there is at least one study proving the correlation. In Manhattan, the city's Independent Budget Office looked at sales and estimated that if you live within about two blocks of a shelter, you would get about 24% to 25% less. I'm not afraid of the unknown, but if the safety issues are detrimental in the downtown business-oriented area, we want more to be certain that the negative impacts will be worse in our low-income, family-oriented residential neighborhood. IFS says that the negative impacts are not caused by their guests, but the fact is that wherever IFS goes, there is a huge increase in calls for service, as was shown with the 2020 Full Hills Warming Shelter and the Red Lion Hotel. The Planning and Zoning Commission denied IFS conditional use permit because the low-barrier shelter use is not compatible with the uses of the neighborhood and would have adverse impacts that cannot be mitigated even with conditions. These circumstances and facts have not changed. Regardless of Interfaith Sanctuary's intense public relations and lobbying campaign, in an attempt to twist the facts and distort the real issues surrounding the conditional use permit and its denial, this shelter is and remains an incompatible use. Therefore, I urge you to uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision and confirm the denial of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky Danachak? All right, I'm going to move on to Helen Cobbler. And then Brooke Bates.
I'm Helen Cobbler, and I live on Willow Lane in Veterans Park community. I've lived in Boise for 67 years, and I have lived on Willow Lane since 1997. I have recently built a duplex on Willow Lane and plan to retire in it. I have been a Realtor for over 40 years in Boise, and I was impressed when Jody said that the prices do not reflect a normal market right now. I don't think you can go by what the market has done in the last few months. It's not a normal market, and we will see it again. I can tell you from experience that it will affect the property values with a shelter in the area compared to an area without a shelter, but it is not at the moment. I have applied for conditional use permits myself in the past, and I have always been told that the prime consideration was whether or not the use was going to be compatible with the community and the housing around it, and especially in residential areas. And I feel like this is definitely not compatible with what we have going on in Veterans Park area. I would beg you, please, uphold the decision of the planning and zoning.
Thank you. Brooke Bates, then Christina, and I'm not sure if it's Christina who lives on Sunset.
Madam Mayor and council members, I am Brooke Bates, and I understand many of the neighbors' concerns. As a board member at Interfaith, I also understand that Interfaith Sanctuary is much more than a shelter. It's a solution through carefully coordinated services and specific programs engineered to enable guests at Interfaith to get back on their feet. We have so many successful stories, but here's two with the time that we have. Kevin came to us through Project Recovery after spending years alone, struggling with addiction. One day, he had had enough. He tentatively walked into our Phase 1 of our recovery program, and he quietly sat through the meetings, listening, but not really engaging. Later, he was also invited to participate into our Project Wellbeing, which is our mental health program. And he slowly began to connect through the group, art, and writing. One day, when entering the shelter, several people said hello to Kevin by name. An emotional Kevin shared how much that meant to him during the group discussion. It had been quite a while since he had heard his name spoken out loud. That feeling of acceptance and care began his healing process. He has been clean. He has been sober over two years. He has employed full-time and is currently looking for housing of his own. He shows kindness and understanding to those mentors, and he's a great cheerleader for all those there, needing the encouragement to take those brave steps he took, finding their way back to hope and joy. Jacob's our next story. Jacob was struggling with mental health issues and undiagnosed disabilities. He is on the spectrum, which makes a social interaction very difficult. When Project Wellbeing was initiated, Jacob was the very first one to volunteer to be part of this new group. We found out Jacob is an incredible artist and writer. And after hearing the stories of the participants in Project Wellbeing, he came up with the idea of creating a newsletter featuring stories and poetry and art written and created by those in our homeless community. What he created was beautiful, brilliant, and hopeful, and a place to help lift the stigma around homelessness, mental health, and addiction. The newsletter was presented to Idaho Press, and they agreed to help turn that newsletter into a newspaper. Jacob was mentored by the staff at the Idaho Press and now is creating monthly applications called Word on the Street, a paper for the people. The Idaho Press prints 30,000 of these papers and inserts them once a month in their paper. Jacob is employed, and he is now living on his own. Those are just two stories, and I'd like to thank you so much for all of the time, the effort, your compassion, and all your concerns, and let's work together to find a solution and create more of these successful stories by appealing the CUP.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Christina, I'm sorry. I think it's your last name starts with an L. Hello, welcome. And then after that, Janet Kaufman, Julie Vick, Brand Gates, and Tim McNeil.
I had a feeling you might struggle with my name. Everyone does. It's Los Anell.
Oh, Los Anell. Great, thanks.
So, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for allowing us to testify on this. Okay, many of the businesses close to the location under review benefit from millions of dollars in public improvements the city has made to the Willow Lane Sports Complex. Local team events are organized by Parks and Recreation Department, while the Chamber of Commerce actively solicits regional and national sports tournaments to be hosted at this facility. All of these activities generate significant economic benefits for the nearby businesses and provide a revenue stream for the city. The use being considered in this application has significant potential to adversely impact the sports complex due to the fact that it's a wet facility and allows those open alcohol containers. The city's records for Parks and Rec and Police Department show years of reoccurring problematic issues in parks along the Green Belt. And be reminded that there's the reparian area that's under protection as well on that Green Belt. These same adverse impacts could likely occur at the Willow Lane facility, creating negative experiences for the visitors across the nation attending events with outcomes that could be deemed a public nuisance under Idaho law and ultimately decrease interest in this facility. This would negatively affect the area for business and the city's bottom line. Requiring a permit for alcohol that has been brought up in this very appeal, which revealed an additional burden that would be placed on the police department to enforce that restriction, the police department is already understaffed and struggling to fill vacancy positions. Adding more of a burden to their workload is not good governance. Requiring a permit for alcohol in order to mitigate the adverse impacts from the types of use requested by this CUP will penalize the users of the park who have done nothing wrong to cause such a restrictive action. So telling the hundreds and thousands of participants that have enjoyed this complex over the years and years and years without very minimal, as testified by the director of the city, the Parks and Rec himself, said very few impacts because of this open container policy. And to tell them that through no fault of their own, they might have to go to permits, and worst-case scenario, maybe not even allowed. I don't think that's fair to that public that has been safely using this complex. And I don't know who would have to actually tell them. I wouldn't want to be the ones to have to say that. Upholding the commission's denial of the CUP ensures the business community in this area will not suffer the economic injury, and it is the best economic interest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Janet Kaufman, Julie Vick, Brand Gates, and then Tim McNeil.
Mayor and council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am Janet Kaufman from the East End. The last four years, can you hear me? The last four years, as an educator, mediator, and facilitator, I have worked with single adults in Project Wellbeing and families and children at Interfaith. I have been one of a team of people supporting families, which includes the staff member helping with homework, the caseworker partnering with parents to address families' needs, and the preschool teacher. All this at a homeless shelter. In a creative writing exercise I did with children ages seven to 10, the children wrote these lines as part of a collective poem. "I am a nice person. I think I have a good life. I know I have good friends. I have a nice family. I will be a good son. I wish I were not homeless. I need a home." Here's the thing. We have to figure out how to be a real community to care for everyone here so that young children, like the ones who wrote these lines, get their most basic needs met. Will we make our decisions on the side of life, compassion, and courage, or on fear? I urge you to support Interfaith's appeal. At the shelter, I see guests working hard in every way. They work to heal from trauma, learn new skills, support each other, and create a sense of family for each other. In their jobs in home healthcare, hospitality, restaurants, and service, they care for many people in this community. The artists bring creativity and beauty into our lives. The parents want to do right by their children. The children and everyone want safety, caring, love. In the discussions I facilitate with them, the guests so often express deep gratitude to Interfaith for the opportunity it affords them to find safety, community, and growth. Interfaith offers real shelter, not just a physical roof over people's heads, but shelter that affords time and space to find stability, forge healthy relationships, find employment and housing, and address physical and mental health concerns. Interfaith makes our whole city safer. We need Interfaith to succeed in its relocation endeavor. While there may be other solutions for the city to explore over time in an ideal world that we have not yet made, our guests do not have time. No organization in Boise has yet come up with a better solution for the near future. It is understandable that people feel fear and apprehension about this project, but do we want to make this decision based on fear? I continue to work at Interfaith because it stirs my humanity. It shows me what dignity looks like, and it allows me to grow and change as the guests grow and change. I am here because I hope we can hear each other, see each other as all part of the human family and work together to make this project viable. If not now, when?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Janet.
Janet?
Question. Hi, Janet. It sounds like you have a lot of expertise in this area and has had quite a professional history. Can you talk a little bit about the need for wraparound services when it comes to safety and what that means?
Can you tell me what you're thinking about?
So it sounds like you've done a lot of wraparound services to help those who are experiencing homelessness, and can you talk about whether those wraparound services And can you talk about whether those wraparound services yield to greater safety outcomes? Or whether, and security outcomes, or if that's separate, if that programming is separate in your mind?
In my mind, they absolutely create greater safety and this is what inspires me about Interfaith. There are so many wraparound services that Interfaith has created and continues to create in response to the need they see in the moment. I mean, they saw people needed exercising, they created an exercise program. You know, they saw that there was, there were, people were coming in with addiction problems and they created an addiction program within the shelter. That people can stay and have 24 hour care within the shelter. It's extraordinary. So I'm continually moved. They let me work there, which I love. You know, I, writing with kids, reading, getting to talk with people about real things and seeing them grow and develop skills, it's remarkable. This is not just any homeless shelter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Julie Vick. All right Bran Gates. Oh Julie, is that you? Bran Gates? Great. Brad, I'm sorry. And then Tim McNeil will be after that.
My name is Julie Vick and I'm a proud member of the Veterans Park Neighborhood Association. The staff reports do not adequately consider the key decision criteria that the Planning and Zoning Committee identified, that the use will not adversely affect other property of the vicinity. While some of the nuisance impacts were at least considered by staff, such as onsite loud music and smoking, the staff report completely ignores many critical negative impacts that the proposed shelter home, which is broadly acknowledged impactful use, will have upon other property in this vicinity, which is already a deteriorated area slated for urban renewal. The staff report does not offer any discussion nor any conditions to address these numerous impacts upon other property in the vicinity. First, Planning and Zoning Committee noted that the shelter home would endanger the character of the neighborhood contrary to goal NAC 3. That's in the Blue Point Boise Strategic Plan. This is a reflection of the effects of economic segregation through the concentration and segregation of poverty in the vicinity of the shelter, including the effect of increasing calls for service. The simple act of adding over 205 extremely low income persons to a small neighborhood with over 30% poverty already has a dramatic effect on increasing economic segregation and the concentration of poverty. These major impacts are described by the Executive Director of the Idaho Fair Housing Council as "concerned that the city and real estate interests are gentrifying low income people out of downtown, which is a fair housing concern, engaging in decentralization of services for people experiencing houselessness, and then resegregating low and extremely low income people and their resources in the proposed state street area." Significantly, these major impacts to properties in the vicinity disproportionately affect minorities and those with disabilities who live in the vicinity at higher rates than in Boise as a whole. More impacts not considered in the staff report, which are again driven by intrinsic design of the proposed shelter include increase in predatory or illegal business and displacement of businesses. These are impacts Planning and Zoning Committee acknowledged the project created contrary to goals EC 3.1 and EC 3.2. Additionally, the limited conditions included in the staff report are inadequate for addressing the impacts to surrounding properties that are created by the proposed shelter and I've run out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up Brad Gates.
Hello, my name's Brad Gates and I live in the Veterans Park Neighborhood. Lived in Boise my whole life, born and raised here. The claim by Interfaith Sanctuary that the P&amp;Z denial of the application was not supported by competent evidence is false. A low barrier shelter of this size does not currently operate anywhere in the state of Idaho. So the only evidence available had to come from elsewhere as a proxy for what will likely occur in the neighborhood. With regards to CUP criteria number four, the proposed use, if it complies with all conditions imposed, will not adversely affect other property in the vicinity. Mr. Wardle said, "The test is not the existence of a preserved, of a perceived adverse impact. The test is whether or not the impact can be mitigated through the conditions imposed." He then referenced the proposed conditions made by several Boise City employees, including Boise Police Chief Lee. While other testimony has laid out an abundance of evidence that the impacts cannot be sufficiently mitigated, it is important to recognize that, as Chief Lee said during a downtown Boise Association meeting, "that the perception of crime and criminal activity is often as negatively impactful to local businesses and residents as the crime itself." The record clearly shows that similar shelters elsewhere with even stronger conditions have still created adverse impacts. I would also like to address comments made by the project's architect, Mr. Erstad, during the first P&amp;Z hearing. He said, "I believe that this is the right use of an appropriate location." Coincidentally, Mr. Erstad is also a stakeholder in the Shoreline Urban Renewal District where Interfaith is currently located. This area has attracted substantial investment interest by developers, where Rivershore Development plans to build Midtown, Boise's next great neighborhood. However, Mr. Erstad and other stakeholders have also recognized that Interfaith has had an adverse impact on the area. A public record request revealed minutes from a project meeting titled CCDC-17th Street Reinvestment Study on April 6, 2021, which is approximately three weeks before Interfaith closed on the State Street building. During a breakout group, Mr. Erstad, along with a Rivershore developer and the new owner of the current Interfaith building, as well as the former Boise City Director of Community Partnerships discussed how Cooper Court and shelters decentralizing was coming at a good time. Why would moving Interfaith be good for the developments if Interfaith had no adverse impacts on its current location? If it wasn't appropriate for the Midtown neighborhood that does not even exist yet, how can it be appropriate for a struggling neighborhood that already exists? Thank you.
Thank you. Tim McNeil. And then we'll take Kay Markwart, Karen Scriever and Brent Mathieu.
Hi. I appreciate your, your hard work. I don't envy you the job that you're doing here today. I am Tim McNeil. I live at 4817 Alamosa Street, about a block from the proposed sanctuary. And I've lived there for 30 years. It's a great neighborhood. There's some wonderful people there. They wave and they say hi and they stop and talk to you when they come by. They're, they're the kind of people that'll loan you their ladders or their, their wrenches or whatever you need. Good folks. When I heard Mr. Rogers singing about a beautiful day in the neighborhood, I thought he's singing about our neighborhood. Good people. Yeah. Some of them are here today. The real question before us is what are the impacts to this neighborhood? That's the question, isn't it? That's what it all boils down to, one question. So we visited the current Interfaith, the smaller current Interfaith Sanctuary area and we've read the newspaper reports and we've read the police department reports. The police said, "Well, you know, we really need to cut down the shrubbery and put in a bunch of floodlights down here. That might reduce some of the impacts." That sounds like a good plan for a county jail. It doesn't sound like a good plan for a neighborhood. I don't think so. I don't want floodlights in my neighborhood. So, as I understand it, Boise Rescue Mission has slightly different criteria for allowing people in. If they think you're going to be disruptive, if they think you're going to be violent, they won't let you in there. Okay? So now these are the folks that we're being asked to invite into our neighborhood, the ones that are rejected at one of the other shelters. I don't want them invited into my neighborhood. Our Planning and Zoning Commission spent hundreds of hours hearing lots and lots and lots of testimony. You've all had a chance to read all of that. You've read every page, right? I don't envy you that job. But they came up with a decision. These are professionals. These are people that know what they're doing. They looked at a thousand decisions and they said, "This is not an appropriate use in this neighborhood. It's not safe and it's something we need to deny." And I'm asking you, please, to uphold the decision of our Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Kay Markwart.
My name is Kay Markwart. I'm almost 80 years old, as you can tell, because I took my mask off. Okay. I have been involved in working for homeless solutions for decades. And my most recent, I guess, I guess you would call it accomplishment, is working with Leap Housing to build Wendy Court. And most of you probably have heard of Wendy Court. And I'm very proud of that because I finally put my money where my mouth is and bought the property and then found Bart Cochran to work with, with Leap Housing. And at first we wanted to do tiny houses and that was not approved. And then we were going to do a boarding house model and that was not approved. So finally, we decided on the shipping containers. And that didn't need approval. Thank goodness, because then we didn't have all this ruckus with all of these, the complaints and testimonies, et cetera. So that made it much easier to do. Wendy Court too has followed. There's another project across the street, Caritas Commons, which is also nearly completed. I've also worked with Leap on a lot of different things like buying up mobile home courts to, to ensure that the people there will not be displaced. I've had a really long talk with Bobby, who was just up here just a few minutes ago. And I had that talk with her this summer and I understand that most of these people are very passionate about solutions. The problem has been that these solutions have not come forth in the last many, many years. And we are behind. And we are so behind that now we need to approve this Interfaith Sanctuary. There is no other alternative, folks. Okay, unless you want them thrown out on the streets. And my proposal to Bobby was, or my suggestion to Bobby was, yes, this is not, these are not the best practices. But how long will it take before the city acts to do these best practices? It can't happen overnight. It will probably be years. I would suggest that we all start now to come up with better solutions. And I would also suggest in turning around to these people in the pink shirts, "Where have you been?"
I'm going to ask, please address your comments to us.
Sorry, but I would like to know where have you been? And I expect you now, since you're so passionate about doing the right thing, that you join me and many, 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 many others.
And Kay, I missed your time, your time's up, so please wrap up.
Okay, sorry. But anyway, we need to get this done, but we need to work together. And I fully support the expansion of Interfaith Sanctuary. I think it's absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Scriever.
My name is Karen.
Karen, will you come a little closer to the mic? Thanks.
My name is Karen Scriever. I'm a resident of the Veterans Park Neighborhood. I have the interesting perspective of housing a homeless person, running a free medical clinic for homeless and uninsured and living in VPNA on my grandmother's 1920 homestead. In November of 2019, two neighbors and I encountered a lady with a large dog and cat lying in the Lander Street gutter by the wastewater plant. We listened to her story and worked all day to find resources to help her as she had recently returned to Boise after a legal eviction in South Dakota. To keep this net, we paid to board her animals while I picked her up at City Light each morning. After spending three days with her, I felt comfortable to move her and her animals into my heated garage where I set up a bedroom. She has a life-ending illness and PTSD. I came to know this lady and the horrible childhood she experienced in Boise. She's extremely intelligent, caring and proud. I was able to find her affordable housing in Horseshoe Bend that requires my financial support. She cannot drive or ride buses due to her PTSD, so I am her transport. I also voluntarily run a free medical clinic in Garden City for those who do not have insurance. My providers and I see the medical challenges the poor and homeless have ranging from the physical illness, injury, mental illness and addictions. My opposition to the IFS site leaves me with a torn heart because I care about people. That is why I do what I do in my retirement. However, I'm a realist and the proposed IFS location is a bad fit, which will create the perfect storm for all of us to deal with daily. Let's recap what we have. A building that has no buffer next to people's homes and backyards. Vulnerable, vulnerable trailer park residents next door. Small mom and pop restaurants who are fearful of their viability every day. An elementary school about a block away that has a history of hypodermic needles on the playground. The smallest library in the city that is highly used, yet is expected to accommodate a heavy user homeless population at the expense of the neighborhood children. A one-engine firehouse that is currently serving more than it should and now has to support the high call-out volume of a low-barrier shelter. A closed neighborhood police station with perhaps roaming car coverage. A major arterial highway where speeding is rampant with no sidewalks on the south side that must be crossed to a park that is currently approved for alcohol. Whom? Vision zero conflict. An open canal across the street with flowing water six months of the year that invites drownings when one is not fully coherent. A neighborhood that has no sidewalks on its streets for safe walking and a location that is not close to the services many of the homeless use downtown, which will require a bus trip, yet there is no appropriate bus shelter on the east side of state. Wow. Could we create a more perfect situation for problems? Boise should and must do better for the homeless, businesses and the neighborhood. Many times in your city council meetings, you've discussed that safety is what makes a neighborhood. This shelter location will degrade the safety of the neighborhood and the safety of the homeless. In the Bible, Leviticus 1915 says, "Do not twist justice in legal matters by favoring the poor or by being partial to the rich and powerful. Always judge people fairly." Please uphold the P&amp;Z decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we've got Brent. Welcome. And we're going to take a five-minute break after you share your testimony.
Okay. Please note my face mask. It says be kind. I'd like to do a little bit of performance art about Interfaith Sanctuary based on faith from the Gospels and other different teachings, but also based on the fact that I am a Boise resident. I've lived on Plum Street for 30 years. I own my home. I can see the Interfaith Sanctuary property from my front window. I've had decades of experience of interaction with the homeless. Years of interaction with the homeless on a business property I owned on West Washington Street, close to Albertson's. I've volunteered at Interfaith Sanctuary at its founding. I was a close associate and friend of James Sorrells, who was one of the first executive directors of Interfaith Sanctuary. I have sheltered in my backyard and in my house, cohoused mentally ill, homeless, at-risk, low-income people, and most recently, a senior elderly lady, lady living on low income. So I've taken them into my backyard. And that's where I have been for 30 years. Now, I would really echo what my neighbors are saying is that the question at hand, according to the law, is whether the city through a conditional use permit can mitigate the adverse impacts on our neighborhood. And the finding of the Planning and Zoning Committee is that they cannot. And I and many others could go on and on and on and have. And I and many others could go on and on and on and have about why that is. One aspect being state's street traffic and the investment. We put millions of dollars to improve traffic, creating a high-traffic situation, where now we're going to throw into the mix, if this is approved, incapacitated at-risk individuals who will cross state street at prime, high-traffic areas. And according to what I read, one of the major sources of fatalities for the homeless is pedestrian vehicle accidents. That alone is an adverse impact. But the question of litter, of noise, as has been said, they want to open the shelter 20 feet from the trailer court. Just the noise of people passing through will adversely impact it. I've got one neighbor who shares the boundary. And he has three dogs that bark at me every time I walk down the street. He's lived there since the 1950s.
Brent, you've hit time. You can give your last wrap-up sentence.
So I do feel that Boise, be kind. Here's my heart. It's the same thing on here.
Thank you. All right, we'll take a five-ish minute break and then be back.
Separated family. Yep. Yeah. I wrote that down too, because she, I thought she mailed it. So I've got just some, I've got three more people signed up. And if there are any of you that are here today that wish to testify, I need, I need to ask you to head out to the lobby and sign a piece of paper, because that's how employees will then verify that you're a party of record. So I think there are some of you, there are more of you in here than, that have signed up to testify. So if you want to do that, I'm not going to do the kind of open mic setup, but we'll ask that you sign up and then I'll get the piece of paper and call you that way. After these three, unless I get another piece of paper, we'll move on to the Zoom folks. So Zoom folks, thanks for sticking with us. You're on deck. So we will start with Rosemary McLennahan, and then I've got Rhonda Larson and Denise Carusi.
My name is Rosemary and I live in the, my name is Rosemary and I live in the Colchester neighborhood near the Veterans Park neighborhood. On appeal, the applicant refers to the Boise Comprehensive Plan as an aspirational document and accuses the Planning and Zoning Commission of ignoring the zoning ordinance in their reliance on the Comprehensive Plan. This ignores the fact that Boise zoning code explicitly includes compliance with the Comprehensive Plan as a criterion for approval of a cup. The two cases interface sites to support this argument are inapplicable to the discussion of applying review criteria to a cup. Yerudia versus Blaine County, the applicant in question was for a by right use that was denied only on the basis of Comprehensive Plan. Interface application is for a conditional use and it was denied on three separate review criteria, in addition to comments made about the Comprehensive Plan. The Bone versus Lewiston case dealt with an application for a rezon, not a cup and its review criteria. The applicant's continual assertion that the project has to be approved because it is conditionally allowed in a C2 zone, boiled down to the conclusion that they think it's too hard to operate a shelter home that complies with the cup criteria. The text of the reason statement made clear that the commission based their finding of incompatibility on this shelter application's intense adverse impact and undue burden, meaning that the impact of the facility would not be limited enough to be compatible with this area. The commission didn't say no shelter could be cited anywhere in Boise. In fact, they provided recommendations for evidence that could be brought forth in a future shelter application in order to more reliably assess mitigated impact. Their deliberation included consideration of a large reduction population of the proposed site as a way to reduce impact. Planning and zoning's decision shows residents and small businesses throughout Boise that the zoning ordinance is in place to protect their homes and livelihoods when needed. Interfaith is being treated fairly. Just as any other business, it is Interfaith's responsibility to show that they have taken their impact footprint on the surrounding area into account. If we can't serve this population using this model without impact, then we need to look at other ways to support those experiencing homelessness. The National Coalition to End Homelessness advocates for non-congregate shelter as supported by the recent HUD funding opportunities. Perhaps private doors for every guest could be a new starting point. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes.
One question before you leave.
Rosemary.
Sorry. I've been thinking, I've been thinking about some of the things that you testified about a lot since last night. A perfectly acceptable answer would be, beats me, I don't know. But I wonder, do you think that our code and our Comprehensive Plan, taken together, do allow for shelters somewhere in commercial zones? Or do you think that the way the code and the Comprehensive Plan are written effectively makes it impossible for any shelter anywhere?
I don't think it, well, I don't know. And I'll, I'll say that.
That's a humble and fair answer.
And, and my guess is that they probably should be taken together, but there are places in Boise where there's, you know, there should be something that can be done. And I'm just speaking for myself, not, sure, you know, and yes, there's going to be some changes, but in the meantime, we have this issue. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. Rhonda Larson.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Rhonda Larson Cockle. I own a home at 4197 West Plum Street. My home is adjacent to the proposed location. I'm directly behind the location. I share over 100 feet of fence along my backyard with the property. Interface Sanctuary has stated that they'll be using the back of their property for congregate areas. My backyard is, will be roughly about two, maybe three feet away from when they're, where they're congregating. My kitchen and bedroom windows are less than eight feet away. There's no question that granting this CUP even with conditions would be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of my family. There's no conditions of approval that could be placed on this project that would prevent this facility from adversely impacting my property. A fence is not enough to block daily noise from people gathering, the lights that will be shining onto our property, or the impact of secondhand smoke. We will hear guest conversations and amplified sound anytime we use our backyard or even inside our home, because it's only eight feet away. This will create a lack of privacy for my family, as well as all the guests to IFS. A fence can't even begin to mitigate the noise of sirens and lights and daily nightly police ambulance or fire calls. As we heard the police chief's statement yesterday, it's reasonable to assume that the new location would have the same call volume. All of this will disrupt the quiet enjoyment of our home.
Thank you. Denise.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. I live in the infamous North End and volunteer with a number of community service organizations throughout the region. I want to thank you for all that you do and this time, in spite of disagreeing with you at times. The decision we have to make this week is not just about Interfaith, although Interfaith has become a lightning rod in all of these discussions. The local focal point of fear, some misinformation, and some self-interest. We know that the zoning does and has historically allowed shelter operations in this area since the Salvation Army conducted them. We know that Interfaith provides essential services through best practice methodology, because we've watched them carefully for years now. We know that Boise needs emergency shelter operations because we have a current dearth of affordable housing and an alternative safety net. Our real decisions are two. First, who are we as a city? What is our vision and responsibility? We know that everyone is healthy, that if everyone is healthy and has opportunities, our city is more economically and socially stable. Second, how do we make decisions? We have a process in place, even as we learn to improve them. We have city staff whom we hire to be our experts on this process, and I won't repeat their arguments. Not today and not ever can decisions be made based on the loudest and longest voices. We must hold to the long-term view and not the personal and immediate preferences of a few. We must adhere to the zoning codes in place. Most of us in this room are privileged. We're stably housed and we must speak for those who don't have the same luxury, those who have been routinely marginalized and often dehumanized during this process. As our friend, Michael Hoffman, has said about his work with Interfaith, it reminds us that we're human, about profound compassion, about the fragility of family and life under extreme economic and social pressure. As several have noted today, the bigger and long-term picture of ensuring healthy communities is complicated and multifaceted. There are no easy solutions. It requires all of us, our attention and resolve. We need more stability in our community, more housing, more support services, and more steps between a housing emergency and suddenly living on the streets. We need to address this problem farther upstream. It will take time and collaboration, but let's do it. Let's do this hard thing. Until then and for today, we have an immediate and critical need and we have a solution, a suitable solution. Thank you.
All right, now we have Kay Hummel, followed by Carla Velez, Sam Perino, and maybe Con Erickson, and then Erica Schofield.
Good afternoon. I'm Kay Hummel.
Can't really, it's funny, it was on before, but probably just need to get a little closer to it. They, they saw you coming, Kay, and turned it off.
Right. Is this it? Working now?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm Kay Hummel. I live at 420 East Crestline Drive. I've long been a neighborhood person. I'm speaking for myself as a prior commenter on the decision below. So I'm going to speak to you about what you really have to do here. And a lot of people are telling you that, but my understanding from doing planning and zoning work as a citizen for over 30 years is that your decision as reviewers of the PNC record below you and whether they erred is that what is the conditional use require? What has been submitted and did the applicant comply? And are there facts to the contrary of that, that were bought, brought up below last autumn? Not today and not yesterday. So that's where I think you're headed, and I think you all know that you don't need a lecture how to do your jobs, but I, I do know some people in these neighborhoods and I appreciate their concerns and I appreciate their concern about the other, the homeless, that they may or may not know. I know some of those homeless people too, and I go down to Interfaith often. I've never experienced blaring lights and loud music. I've only experienced politeness. I've had Interfaith volunteers come up to me and say, do you need an assistance walking through here? And I say, of course not. I feel fine here and I always do. But that's not on the law, what you have to review. What you have to redo, review, and decide is the conditional use. I've heard a lot of hearsay this morning and yesterday and about read between the lines of what the police chief said. Well, that's not what you're called on to do. And, and that the shelter as it currently operates is not successful. And well, you're not reviewing its current operation. You're reviewing its new proposal for conditional use on State Street, where there is a bus line, where there is grocery a few miles away, where there is, for instance, an approved ACHD plan for a low-stress bikeway, which will help a lot of these people who commute by bike get around. They don't have to ride on State Street. I don't ride on State Street if I can help it on my bicycle. So anyway, to wrap it up, I do think you have a really good record and that the applicant and their legal counsel have pointed out the errors that the Planning and Zoning Commission made. And I do believe their decision was partly arbitrary and it brought in new data that is not supportable. So I urge you to approve the appeal by the applicant and do that, not just because it's the right thing, but it's because that's what our code allows for. In the commercial zones, you can, you can make this shelter work and it's allowable by our process. And we have to go by what the code tells you we have or don't have. So that's all I have to say, and thank you so much for the time you're devoting to this process and to the staff who have allotted a lot of time and put a lot of effort into it. And I will stand for questions if you have any.
Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Yes.
Great testimony. There's one part that I didn't get some clarity on. You said that there was a part that was arbitrary, but you didn't say specifically what that was.
I believe, believing, bringing in the security concerns that were not in the original requirements, as I read them last autumn in the original application, bringing those in, if you will, at the 23rd hour is, was outside the bounds of planning and zoning, councilman.
Thank you for that specific example.
Yeah. So that's it, and thank you very much, and I'll try and not screw up the mic.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, that's not quite it. No, I'm sorry. You said, that's it. Now, no, I had a question.
Oh, sorry, councilman. I was ready.
Then you put the mic on back. I'm sorry. Along the lines of Councilmember Halliburton, you also said you referenced some specific data brought in at the last, I forget the phrase you used, but outside data or outside information that planning and zoning brought in at the last minute.
Well, what I read going on last November in the original hearings is that someone on the, one of the PNC members brought up standards for security that weren't a requirement for the applicant.
That, that's the data that you're talking about.
And I do believe the applicants tried really hard, by the way. They wanted to put a higher fence out back to protect the adjacent neighbors or mitigate effects. And they were told it's not allowed under our code. So instead of building a very high fence, which required a variance, they're still proposing a variance to build an eight-foot-high fence, which is pretty good. I, I'm sensitive to what the nearest neighbors think they will experience, but they haven't experienced it yet.
Okay, I think you've wandered away from the question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
So Carla, you might be able to get the mic back in there if you want it in there.
Does it work?
Yes.
I'm Carla Velez, and my address is 1620 West River Street, Boise. I'm a case manager and a supervisor for the Family Shelter Program. I'm here to share what I see every day when I serve families who experience homelessness, because they are the ones who endure the injustice of our political inaction. As a social work professional, I can say that there is nothing glamorous about my job, and I certainly do not do what I do every day, because I have a big heart. I'm sure my heart is not any bigger than anybody else's here. I serve families in our communities who are experiencing homelessness, and I'm here advocating for a new location permit, because it is ethical. It's the right thing to do and it entails best practice. I'm here today because I believe that homelessness is a violation of the right to life, because homelessness is an assault on the dignity and social inclusion of those who, for diverse reasons, are being denied the right of housing, healthcare, water, sanitation, safety, and freedom from cruel and degrading treatment. I have the privilege to share the same space with families and medically fragile individuals, people with disabilities, children, and seniors. And you know what? What I see every day is what I would probably see if I had access to any of your homes. I see parents waking up early and getting their kids ready for school. I see individuals going to work or trying to find one. I see parents doing the best they can with what they have to ensure their families are safe and happy. I see kids playing and sharing with each other. I see seniors and individuals with disabilities or medical issues striving for human connection and real conversations. That is what I witness every day. And isn't that what we all do and we want? I'm here in front of you all, because as a city, we have the minimum car obligation to provide an immediate response to the housing crisis by using all the resources available, both human and physical resources. I'm here because I belong to a group of professionals who understand the effectiveness of timely crisis intervention and onsite wraparound services. As a city, we need to build partnerships at all levels and trust those who, like Interfaith Century Staff, are equipped with the skills, the experience, and the integrity to deliver appropriate levels of services to those experiencing the emotional and physical distress of being forced to live their private lives in public. Having a place that can safely host more individuals and families will reduce the possibility of encampments, premature and preventable deaths, and would allow people to enjoy a life of dignity until permanent housing becomes an available option for them. Yes, we can be a better Boise if we can genuinely commit to build an inclusive community and live up to our potential. The new Interfaith Century location will allow staff at Interfaith Century to continue doing our best work, mitigating the trauma of those who are stigmatized and oftentimes criminalized because of their housing status. Please approve our conditional use permit. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Sam Perino. And then Con Erickson and Erica Schofield, if you'll make your way up towards the front, I'd appreciate it. And then after that, Clay Elkin as well, please start to move towards the front.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Actually, pull it a little closer.
All right. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
All right. Bear with me, please. I'm pretty nervous, but I'll be reading detail. Part two, applicant was aware of impacts. My name's Sam Perino, and I live on Arthur Circle off Arthur Street. The record shows in the applicant's communications with the city that they were aware of the adverse impacts that a homeless shelter creates for properties in the vicinity. Quote, "The area immediately around a homeless shelter may experience an increase in petty theft and other property crimes. These are crimes of desperation and survival," end quote. The applicant's own words also highlight additional adverse and life-threatening impacts that their lack of outward-facing security policies can have on the surrounding community, detailing the awful murder that occurred there in 2018. Quote, "Mr. Kinner was unable to remain at Interfaith Sanctuary because he put other guests at risk. Mr. Kinner struggled with profound mental illness. His actions were horrific and the results of those actions unthinkable," end quote. The applicant has demonstrated in their own words that they're aware of the adverse impacts and that their prior procedures or lack thereof allowed an individual with profound mental illness and criminal record to access the shelter in tandem with other vulnerable guests. And then when his behaviors became an issue within the shelter, but not due to the background check, caused him to be released into the community, causing horrific actions and unthinkable results. Tim Kinner is an extreme example of this problem, but the application does nothing to assure that the neighborhood, how guests who are expelled from the shelter for behavioral concerns each night or whom choose to leave the shelter rather than follow rules, will be managed to ensure the safety of the community and private properties or public areas near the shelter and to assure they will not become de facto camping areas. The record shows that the applicant was aware of at least some adverse impacts that a homeless shelter, e.g. increased crime and its inadequate security policies, e.g. releasing dangerous individuals into the community, have upon the immediate community and thus must know that a strong security plan protecting the public outside their walls are needed. Finally, the public also needs to see evidence of whether the security measures eventually proposed in the future security plan have been successful in protecting the community around a large shelter elsewhere, when the only point of reference the applicant has provided for their security measures is the River Street Shelter Security Plan. And the record clearly causes for concern at and around the shelter and increases in calls for service between 2016 and 2020. The mere transfer of his security provisions present there to a new larger shelter embedded in a vulnerable residential neighborhood are not sufficient to base a finding of no impact on the neighbors. Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for me? Though I'm not an expert.
Madam Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes.
Councilmember Bajin earlier said that it's okay to say, I don't know. So if you don't know the answer to this question, that's absolutely fine. So you referenced that you thought a security plan needed to be exist, needed to exist. And then you also said that you thought that might need to be reviewed, potentially by the neighbors or over time to make sure that whatever plan was available was being evaluated and changed going forward. One of the conditions that's listed, condition number 19 from the staff, says the applicant shall meet monthly with a representative from the Boise Police Department and Our Path Home to discuss, discuss operations and enforcement challenges. Are, does that, I know that there's other things that you're not necessarily on board for, but does that condition address the evaluation of an ongoing security plan?
Well, I think what we'd like to see is a security plan that could possibly work. And I don't know if a large shelter in a residential area could possibly ensure the safety of the community around, in any case. But if there was, in another city, a large shelter like this with no buffer in the community that had a successful security plan and could show that there's no injury or to the community or property theft or vandalism, that would, that would be productive to see.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to put just a little bit more pressure on you. So like, let's say it's an effective security plan. An effective security plan is going to have to be reviewed on a regular basis to make sure that it's still working as the world changes.
Right.
There's different obstacles that are there. So condition number 19 talks about that meeting monthly with BPD and Our Path Home, which is sort of our collective impact group, addressing homelessness.
Right.
If it was a successful plan and that was the evaluation process, does that satisfy your need that you mentioned earlier for that ongoing evaluation process?
I mean, that seems like a good ongoing evaluation process. I don't, yeah, I don't know, once a large shelter gets in place, if, I mean, I assume there's going to be a lot of security risk and damage and stuff. I don't know how you undo that once it's already in place. I know you can address things as they happen with the Boise Police Department to try to make it not happen again. But we're trying to, yeah, prevent like injury and theft and damage beforehand.
Great. Yeah, thank you. And also, good job on the public testimony.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks. Con Erickson.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, thank you. I'm Corey Erickson. It's okay. First of all, I would like to commend the Planning and Zoning Commissioners for their outstanding work in reviewing the evidence on record. I would expect that you have reviewed all the evidence on the record as well, which is copious. The reason the IFS landed on the number of 205 beds is that their loan documents explicitly state that they had to provide a minimum of 200 emergency shelter beds to acquire the loan. It was also mentioned that there was no expertise to turn to on treatment for people without a home, substance abuse, mental health, things like that. I submitted into evidence SAMSHA, Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration tip 55, among other expert documents. Multiple sites are achievable. It's not complicated to bring that model to fruition. The location for this conditional use request has a significant impact on the new police station that was specifically cited to be near the current IFS shelter location. The city's record shows the following. The January 9, 2019 meeting minutes for the City Impact B Committee says, Boise Mayor Beeter and City Council requested the police department identify a location for a micro district facility, specifically near the Roadscape Park and Interfaith Sanctuary area. The city considered about 10 sites before settling on the formal, the property formerly known as Lucky Duck, Lucky Dog Tavern, which was near Interfaith Sanctuary. And Allison Tate of the Boise Police Department explained the pros of the site, which included its proximity to the high-call volume areas. November 6, 2019, meeting minutes for the Public Works Commission included the following. Commissioner Crowley asked why the location of the new police micro district was chosen. Mr. Bostfield answered, the selected location is, excuse me, close to downtown core without being impacted by downtown traffic. It provides good access to the greenbelt, supports the bicycle, police patrol, and it's close to some high-call areas such as Rose Park. I'm sorry, my mouth is dry. The city's press release for this station says downtown Boise consistently has more calls for service than any other part of town, and Boise Police Bike Unit works daily with social service providers. Budget documents show this project costs approximately 4.3 million and required 1 million from the general fund to go to, to front load the police impact fee account. On one of the responsibilities, one of the responsibilities of the government is to provide public services for the citizenry and to do so in a fiscally sound manner, as required by Section 67-6502 Subsection B of the Idaho Code. This provision is based on the language of the original model act for city planning and wise and efficient expenditure of public funds. The city's financial relationship with the proposed location is critical issue. The record shows City Councilmember Clegg speaking about the lack of fire stations in the northwest planning area of the city on July 16, 2019, and the aspect of making sure the location is the right choice. Quote, "Trying to be frugal with taxpayer money, you want to get this right. You don't want to build a station at 5 million and commit to 2 million a year in operations in the wrong place." Since this police station was specifically Since this police station was specifically cited to be near the current IFS shelter, relocating this shelter away from the downtown area will result in a waste of taxpayer money. Please uphold the decision of the PNC."
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
You said something in the first sentence about 205 beds. I'm just going to ask that you restate it, and I'm not going to ask Interfaith to respond to it right now, but I will ask the Interfaith to respond to that statement later.
Great. In the loan documents, it specifically says that they, they have to have a minimum of 200 emergency shelter beds to acquire the loan and operate.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
Next up, we've got Erica Schofield. Thank you, Corey. And we've got Clay Elkin and then Katie Fight.
Erica Schofield, I live in the Northwest Neighborhood. Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, I greatly appreciate Councilmember Clegg's acknowledgement during Monday's hearing that the experts aren't always right. I'm not an expert on domestic abuse, but I am a survivor of a domestic abuse relationship that lasted three years. And I realize that the domestic abuse shelter that is 150 feet from this proposed location is a sensitive topic, and it would be preferred that we not talk about this. But the problem of incompatibility of these two shelters needs to be part of the record in the discussion and the decision. This proposed location is entirely insensitive to the women and children seeking protection from domestic abuse at the facility close by. It's very easy for people to say, why doesn't she just leave him? It's not that simple when every day means you are walking on eggshells because you don't know when or where the next violent eruption will occur. Thirty years ago, I told my abuser that I didn't care if he burned the house down or took my car, and I didn't care if he killed me that day because it was better than living in total fear. It took every ounce of courage I had to leave him. My experience is not unusual. So it's astonishing to me that anyone would think that this is a compatible location for a low barrier facility with a large percentage of single males who are chronically homeless and have been described as, quote, "the worst of the worst," unquote, by a staff member of IFS during the August 16 Shelter Better Task Force meeting. The staff member was being honest in speaking about the individuals and the challenges and the help with the mental health issues and severe addiction they are dealing with. The women in the nearby shelter have found the courage and the strength to leave their abuser. And as a city, we need to consider that and make sure that we protect them and their children as well. The last thing that many women who leave a domestic abuse situation need is to be in an area with a large number of unstable men. If you overturn this decision, you will make it simply harder for some of these women. I ask you to please uphold the denial as the location is not just incompatible for a predominantly residential area, rather it rises to the level of being grossly incompatible with the shelter nearby. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Erica, thank you for your courage today. It means a lot.
You generally don't see me nervous, but I'm nervous.
Clay Elkin.
Hi there, I'm Clay Elkin, a Veterans Park neighbor. My testimony as a private citizen is informed by professional experience as a firefighter EMT permanently assigned to Boise Fire Engine 5, or referred to as Lay by the appellant. It is based on expert-level public safety experience and knowledge. Slide. This slide shows 911 call data for the half-mile radius surrounding the current and proposed IFS locations. The next slide looks more closely at fire and EMS 911 calls to the specific IFS location.
I'm sorry, we don't move the slides for you. You, you use the button right there.
You can see the significant difference in call volumes anticipated to move with Interface Sanctuary. Commissioner Danley referenced my analysis of 911 call data from March 2018 through 21. This data was obtained from the Ada County Sheriff's Office through public records request. The SEP TED report and the 911 dispatch data reveal similar call volume burdens attributable to IFS. Chiefs Lee and Niemeyer both stated that increased 911 call volumes will likely follow IFS. PZC appropriately denied the CUP based on this public safety impact. Chief Niemeyer recommended 20 hours of an EMT onsite, but based on experience, the sick versus not sick triage would not decrease the incidents where transport and treatment are required. Additionally, chief's testimony on emergent versus non-emergent calls doesn't clarify how our 911 dispatching works. Many of the calls you referred to as non-emergent are still emergencies in the eyes of the calling public and are often dispatched as Level Bravo or above, which require an emergent response from fire and EMS. There was questioning with Chiefs Lee and Niemeyer regarding call volume shifts. This slide represents the fire and EMS 911 calls for service increase at the Warming Shelter on 8th Street. Note the spike in calls when IFS operated a winter warming shelter. IFS also operates at the Red Lion Hotel. This slide demonstrates the fire and EMS call volume increase at that location. While we cannot predict the weather, we can anticipate the significant 911 call volume increase as Chiefs Lee and Niemeyer stated. We also have a scarcity of public safety resources in the proposed location, noted by Chief Niemeyer's testimony and illustrated by the EMS Transport Unit map created by the Boise Fire Department obtained through public records. The proposed location is without an EMS transport unit within the four-minute travel time identified by NFPA, ISO, BFD policy, and adopted by Boise Municipal Code. The nine-minute travel time referenced by Chief Niemeyer is an access standard and not supported by Boise City documents. In conclusion, my testimony is based on expert-level experience and knowledge of public safety impacts. The PZC appropriately denied the application based on the undue burden on our public safety resources noted in the record. Thank you for your time. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Hi, could you talk a little bit more about these numbers in terms of Ada County Paramedics' response? Yesterday, I asked a question of the chief, kind of as a story problem with the current delineation and timing. You just mentioned something about the statistics he gave being from a different source. Can you drill down a little bit on that? I just want to make sure I understand. You said that the nine-minute travel time was such and such.
Okay, that nine-minute travel time, that was for ALS. The five-minute travel time here referred to, those are adopted by ACCESS, which most of you on mature are familiar. Access includes Meridian, Eagle, Kuna, Ada County Paramedics. Those are not supported by any of our Boise City documents. So our Boise Fire Department policy regarding level of service references four-minute travel time. You'll find that in policy two. Additionally, in Boise City Municipal Code, I think it's 4316, ordinance 5517, all those are in the public record. Reference either 1.5 mile travel distance or four-minute travel time for our response. And you'd have to ask, why did the City of Boise Fire Department put together these maps regarding this four-minute travel time previously, but all of a sudden we're talking about a nine-minute or a five-minute travel time? It's because at the time, these maps were put together.
Excuse me, is that a question you'd like to ask?
Yeah, actually, I'm, that's, he's getting to the answer that I'm looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, at the time these maps were put together, to my understanding, this was the standard that we were looking at, and it's reflected and based on the Boise City documents and Boise Fire Department policy. So that is my assumption on why this four-minute travel time was used additionally. And FPA standards and ISO standards reference the same four-minute or 1.5 mile travel distance.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Madam Mayor. Clay, this map is only the Ada County Paramedic EMS sites. It does not include the fire stations. The access system works by coordinating fire with paramedics. So if you overlaid the fire stations on top of this, it would be almost full coverage. Is that, is that correct?
I, I think that's a fair assumption. The Boise Fire Department does not transport, though. So if you need to go to the hospital emergency, emergently, you need a transport unit to do that. So you'll get treatment and you'll get care, but that's why I mentioned the transport component of it, because this is, this is where that gap is for us.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, now Katie Fight. There you are. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Katie Fight, 1006 North Fifth, Boise, Idaho. Thank you for the opportunity to provide, to provide testimony. I believe Boise can do so much better than this reckless Interfaith proposal on State Street. I was listening to the testimony at home this morning and into the early afternoon. And it's clear that these congregate shelters are not the best path forward for our city and are not the best, best paths forward for our neighborhoods or for the resident, the guests, residents, whatever, people that use the services of shelters. We need small shelters scattered across the city and based on the specific service needs of the people in the various shelters. I'm really concerned too about the unnecessary trauma that I, that what I believe is a reckless proposal, reckless way of going about citing a shelter by Interface Sanctuary, the degree of trauma it's caused to the community, to the neighbors, to the neighborhood, and it has, you know, also generated uncertainty within, you know, the, the shelter community too. You will, if you overturn Planning and zoning's very well reasoned, very well articulated decision, you will be creating new problems in potential homelessness or displacement of people of modest income within the city. Because there's no doubt that property values will decline. It's no, there's no doubt that people will, that, that no longer choose to stay in a neighborhood, potentially because of fear of, you know, for safety for themselves or children, whatever, will be displaced and with property values the way they are, will very likely have no place else to go within our city. So I would ask you to look at the CARES funding you're getting and other avenues to move forward with a much more just, well-thought-out, well-planned, and fair to everybody in the city proposal.
Thank you. So next up, we're going to move to the Zoom portion of the afternoon. And for this part, I'm going to ask the clerk to call names, name by name. And I'll just remind folks on Zoom that, and once you've testified, we're going to move you off the system and you can watch from YouTube. And if you aren't a party of record, if you haven't been moved off the system already, and that'll happen as well. We're going to go till four. And then we'll see people's faces, right?
Yes, if they have their camera, Madam Mayor, we will see faces.
Yeah, we'll ask that you turn your camera on. Thank you.
Looks like we have Mr. Gilchrist, I think was first up, or excuse me, Brenda Gilchrist.
Brenda, you're muted. Oh, now, now it's, I still can't hear you. Might need to check the audio source. While you're working on that, could we hear from Bart Harlow?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Bart Harlow. I'm a resident of Boise, and I've been a volunteer at the Interface Sanctuary. I've been very impressed by the way the Interface Sanctuary staff have served the city of Boise by providing shelter and support to our homeless neighbors, particularly over the last 24 months when COVID has added exponentially to an already enormous task. On a nightly basis, these creative, caring, and courageous people address the challenges of providing a low-barrier emergency service in a very humane way. I want to also emphasize how the many folks who come into the shelter for an evening almost always demonstrate grace under pressure, as do the amazing people who work at Interfaith. I've tried to understand the rationale for voting against the State Street facility and for setting criteria that seemed to be almost impossible to me. To quote a recent editorial in the Idaho Statesman, "With these criteria, a low-barrier emergency shelter large enough to meet the existing need would not win approval no matter where it is located in the city." Now, I understand Mayor McLean was quoted recently as saying that no city in America has solved the homeless housing challenge so far. Well, that is certainly true. I want to offer one very important reason for such a disappointing track record around this country. That's the embrace of gentrification that allows and encourages the overinflation of housing prices. Given the impact of the problem of homelessness in Boise, why would the city reject such an obvious and effective homegrown approach to our most vulnerable citizens? Well, maybe we have all drunk the gentrification Kool-Aid and believe that in the long run, there is no downside to ever escalating housing prices. And even more importantly, there's nothing really we can do about it. I would argue that the gentrification we are experiencing in Boise right now is part of a larger pattern of a kind of a pandemic of inequality that encourages housing price inflation as a source of wealth for those fortunate enough to be able to buy into this system. Unfortunately, this same dynamic process also produces an ever largest, larger homeless population. If we continue down this path and reject the Interfaith permit, I believe that we will get the real so-called solution that is the signature of this kind of gentrification in other cities like Portland or San Francisco or LA or Austin, Texas. And that is tense, beginning to spring up around the city. Let's find the civic courage to take a different approach, one that recognizes the right of anyone living in a city to have a roof over their heads and a warm meal every night. In order to do so, of course, we might need to develop different planning criteria, criteria derived from thinking of housing as a human right rather than something left to the contingencies of the market. Please help Interfaith Sanctuary to continue to do their important work and serve Boise by supporting the conditional use permit for the State Street location.
Thank you.
For your time and patience.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Mayor.
Did we fix the audio?
Yeah, it's pretty hard to hear. I was wondering for our next one to make sure that, that the audio is turned up.
Did we fix the audio for the other speaker?
Madam Mayor, it appears that Brenda is unmuted, so we'll see if on her end the audio is working.
Okay, are you able to hear me now?
Yeah.
Great, let me put my camera on. Can you please open the slide deck titled CUP 2100026, substantial competent evidence for?
Okay. All right, we can see it. I'd ask that you get started.
I, I'm not sure if that's it, but, so my name's Brenda, and I moved to Idaho from a city that had the fifth-largest homeless population in the United States. I think we can learn from other cities and counties on what their experience has been with homelessness and low-barrier housing shelters such as IFS. In 2019, a large 1,100-bed problematic shelter in Salt Lake City was closed down and reopened as three separate shelters that serve different populations, including single men, single women, and men and women shelters. A separate family facility was renovated by nearby Midville as well. Although the Salt Lake Shelter is separate, separate populations by demographics, they are similar to the Interface Sanctuary's proposed shelter in size, ranging between 200 to 300 beds each. They allow guests to remain in the shelter all day, and they offer, they offer wraparound services. However, it should be noted that the Salt Lake Shelters provide twice as much space per person as a proposed shelter on West State Street. Interface Sanctuary often argues that crimes of criminal, crimes of survival will be reduced using the 24-hour service model. And Mayor McLean, you've, you've often referenced these shelters during your addressing homelessness listening sessions. We obtained police call volume data, and if you can go to the next slide, we obtained police call volume data for the 200-bed women's shelter and the 200-bed women and men's shelter from one year before and one year after opening. Crimes and criminal activity were significantly elevated within close proximity of these new shelters after opening. In some instances, the police calls increased by several orders of magnitude. This slide shows the percentage increase in select calls after opening of the men's and women's shelters. Next slide, please. This slide shows the percentage increase in selected calls after opening the women's shelter. Note a significant increase, increase in police calls in almost all call types. The 300-bed men's shelter showed an even more dramatic increase. Local media reported 9,300% increase in calls for service to the new shelter. Calls for shelter or calls for service data showed 350 drug calls to the surrounding area in a year after opening. In a year after opening compared to 10 years before. And a fivefold increase in assault calls to over four per month. These data provide substantial competent evidence and should be, should not be disregarded. Clearly, the commission recognized this when they denied the CUP application. And it should be noted that the mayor and the city council of Salt Lake City placed a ban. On opening new homeless shelters to better assess the impacts. Emergency shelters has on the surrounding communities.
Thank you, Brenda.
My testimony.
Madam Mayor, next up, we have Cora Estalita Edlin.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council members and Interface Sanctuary reps. My name is Cora Estalita Edlin and I am testifying to you as a concerned citizen, homeowner, taxpayer and voter. I have lived on Willow Lane and in the Veterans Park Neighborhood. Association for over 30 years. I urge you to please support Planning and Zoning Commission's. Decision to deny the CUP application. I have included my sources at the end of this document. Moving IFS to State Street would not solve the crime issues that were reported or solve the homeless issue. It would just move them to a different area. The needles, drugs, human feces and vomit and trash found by the Idaho State Police. At the tent demonstration. Validate these concerns and shows that these problems will follow them wherever they go. It is terrifying to think of unmedicated mental patients, alcoholics and drug addicts roaming our neighborhood at all hours of the day and night. The people of IFS and you get to go home at the end of the day. This is our home. We have nowhere else to go. You have a responsibility and an obligation for the safety of all citizens, not just the homelessness. The chief of police's response about protection for our neighborhood was no plans for increased protection. This adds fierce stress and certainty as well as added cost and financial burden to people who may not. Be able to afford cameras, fencing and security measures to protect their property. The area towards the end of Willow Lane, close to the entrance of the green belt where it connects to Willow Lane and the park would be. A prime place for those that don't stay at the shelter to congregate, especially at night. Unless the police are called, activity would go unnoticed. The grand, the good neighbor agreement does not hold IFS accountable. When asked if the agreement worked, they were unable to give an example of a situation it solved. IFS made the choice to sell their current property before getting the new one approved. Now that you're trying to dupe the public into paying. The consequences for their decision. The deliberate misleading information being told to the media and Boise citizens that no beds available. And being at crisis level is deceitful and manipulative. The Boise Rescue Mission has stated they had beds available at their shelters. And that the people have chosen to be on the streets because they don't want to follow rules that limit their drug and alcohol loose. There is a lot of information showing that putting a low barrier shelter in the residential area and close to businesses from here. In Boise, along with information from other states is a dangerous idea. I would hope that Boise would learn from that. And what has happened else without having to experience the problems themselves. I have a proposal that would eliminate a lot of fear and anxiety to all involved. And I am going to use a piece of land next to St. Al's as a possible example. The reason I chose that.
Cora.
Piece of land.
You've exceeded your time.
Has mentioned that they wanted to help. Okay, so I would like to end by saying. Please uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of this application. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next up is Candy Schultz.
Or Richard Fritzley.
Are you ready for me?
Sure, we can see you.
Okay, I was wondering you said candy, so. My name is Richard Fritzley. I live on Hawthorne Drive in the Sycamore overlay just north of the proposed shelter. Got me a little off guard. I didn't think you'd be ready for virtual testimony today, so don't have my remarks written down yet. I just want to say that I commend IFS for the work they do. They're obviously a good organization and have good intentions. And I think the vast majority of people support the trying, the work they're trying to do. However, they, they failed on multiple accounts. I don't want to rehash much of the testimony that's been given over, but I've learned a couple of new things from IFS's testimony. That they really hadn't come forward clearly with. In prior meetings and testimony. And the first is how the executive director said they arrived at the number of beds before she had always claimed that they are working off of best practices. But in fact, yesterday she testified that they looked at the number of people they were serving. And took that. And figured out how to put those people into the space that they had. Obviously, the neighborhood groups have done more research into best practices than what the IFS did. They backed into the situation rather than looking at what the best practice would be and what they would need to solve the problem. The other is that I put in my prior letter to you is they, they have used a burn the boat strategy which the. The CEO of the organization of the Board of Directors outlined. They, they face a problem that many businesses face and being a nonprofit does not exempt them from solving those problems. That is, it's, they're in a tough real estate market. And they, they have a problem to solve. But when you take the risk that they did of buying a building before you get your use permitted. You run the risk of having that use denied. I'm not going to rehash all of the testimony that's been given, but it's very clear from the testimony that others have given. That the use is not compatible with the neighborhood. There, no matter what conditions you do right, there will be negative impacts that cannot be mitigated. I would suggest that this, that IFS just. Withdraw their, their proposal, come back to the board. And many like me would support a proposal that served families. In a more reasonable situation at that location. And they find another location which others have argued for too, to fit, to serve their single men and single women. Population. That's a, that's a needy population, just like everybody that are homeless and unhoused. And the city needs to work harder with them and all of us as, as residents need to help too. But it's very clear from the requirements of getting a CUP that IFS has not met them. Mr. Wardle's argued hard but failed. To show that the, the decision the Planning and Zoning Commission made is faulty and I urge you to uphold that decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, now we'll move on to Candy Schultz.
Now we see you, Candy. Welcome.
Uh, my name is Candy Schultz.
Candy, your, your volume is pretty low.
Okay, let's see if I can increase. I was having problems with it earlier. Is that better?
Not really. I'm wondering if you can just be really close to the mic.
I am literally kissing my monitor, so.
I'm wondering, do you have AirPods or something that might be connected to the computer?
No, no, it's a, it's just a remote lap.
Okay, let, let's try. We'll try really hard to hear you.
I'll yell.
Okay, I won't tell you to not yell.
Okay. My name's Candy Schultz. I've lived in the Veterans Park Neighborhood for 33 years. I am 600 feet from the post, proposed site. The proposed facility will adversely impact the near vicinity. There have been some inaccurate information presented regarding poverty levels in the neighborhood, and I know this was repetitive. And the photographs were shown earlier of nearby trailers and homes. And most of these homes were built 50 years ago or more. I drive by them every day on my way to and from work. Neighbors like these that own, have owned their homes for over 20 years will have an increase in siren noise. We've already seen an increase in siren noise with Valor Point. Um, the traffic just today on our lunch break going from home to work, I just could not believe this. The, the, the reduction in the State Street speed limit, dropping it to 35, starting at Hollister. People just disregard that and there are, they, I just can't even imagine trying to cross. That street because nobody goes 35 on that, in that stretch of road. A buffer between a large emergency homeless shelter is crucial. To the health of all of our Boise neighbors, particularly Boise's most vulnerable. I just don't think we should ignore the clear social inequality. And as I previously mentioned, I've lived on the street for 33 years. I've lived through times of struggle. Times of debt and my own financial vulnerability. I'm fortunate that I've been able. To grow my financial stability. And have spent the last year and a half remodeling my house. To make it my dream home for me and my daughter. Please uphold the planning and zoning denial so myself and my neighbors who are working to modify. Our pocket of poverty into a pocket of pride. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Madam Mayor is Rin Gardner.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear and see you. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. My name is Rin Gardner. I live exactly right behind. The proposed Interface Sanctuary site. I share 100 feet of property line with them. I have been here since 1954 on and off. Continuously since 1980 in this very house. I've watched all of the development that has gone on in this. Whole area here with the commercial, the building of the building, all of those things. The sale of it from what it was over to. The Salvation Army. And the Salvation Army, of course, said that they were going to be great neighbors and take care of us and do all of those things. Well, they were good to come in. They did not house people here. This was strictly a store. The housing was all done across State Street over in the Willow Lane Park right there. And which is currently the Women and Children's Alliance Center. They. As far as the city coming and supporting us as neighbors with our complaints. We were sent. Wherever to work it out with the Salvation Army. And I foresee the same thing happening with the Interface Sanctuary. That if you approve this and let them go forward. That we will be left out here on our own in this area. And we will consequently have to try to work it out with Interface Sanctuary. I don't think it's fair to the residents. It's not fair to the residents of Interface Sanctuary. We all agree that homelessness is a problem. But the current model that Interfaith has, I believe, needs to be modified greatly. And if you want to bring one into this area, I would not be opposed to it. But these people that are going to be housed here have to want to get better than where they're at today. If they don't want to, we don't need them. That would be my opinion and I thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ren.
Next up, Madam Mayor is Sarah Christiansen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Can you see me?
Nope.
Oh, well, shoot. Okay, then. Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Sarah Christiansen. I was a volunteer and employee at the Interface Sanctuary from 2010 through mid 2016. I left because my mother was in ill health. For years, I was a volunteer who signed in guests. They walked through the door. I had people who wanted hugs, which was my preferred method of greeting. And others who would get angry if I asked them their name. I have tough skin and I love the position I was in because it, because I got to see all the guests. Later, I was employed as a shift manager filling in for someone who left. My shift was 5:00 PM to midnight. I've had someone sit down in a room with me alone with a large knife in their backpack where others were sleeping. Another time enough, a knife was left outside the fence by a non guest. I was told that there would be an incident and we got the knife and called the police. I had police officers who would regularly pop in during the night to see how I was doing. I once had someone who was prone to violence and banned from the shelter. Show up while other guests were sleeping. I had to run from door to door locking down the place while. Calling the police at the same time. I also worked there when Cooper Camp, Cooper Court became Tent City. I real, I regularly dis, dis, sorry, deescalated situations. That were caused by guests and not others from the area. There were many beautiful, grateful, loving, inspiring guests. However, many had. Mental dysfunctional and addictive challenges that would bring safety issues to the area. They would sleep or frequent. Those who are causing the low and high level incidents often don't want to get caught. So they don't actually do it on shelter property. Several years ago, there was a shelter guest beaten to death by another shelter guest. I had talked to not long before the incident. Although it was an isolated incident, it's an example of the extent of violence that can happen at a low barrier shelter. And guests coming in after volatile drug use. The proposed State Street site surrounding the area and surrounding area. Is established neighborhood and not close to an underpass. I have helped sanctuary guests move into housing with my own vehicle and search town for whatever their needs were. I have, I still give hugs when I see guests and former guests. I have officiated wedding ceremonies of sanctuary. Guests. I have hired a sanctuary guest to cashier at a Hyde, at my Hyde Park booth fair. We have had non guests come to see guests for a wide range of reasons. This will increase the number of people hanging around the shelter area. As a low barrier shelter, guests will be asked to leave for excessive non intoxicated behavior. Rule breaks and where will they go? It absolutely affects the neighborhood. It's disrespectful to house the guest. And propose guests in the area where they walk, where they could walk from one shelter to another. And nearby resources when needed.
Sarah, I've let you run over, so I'll give you one last wrap up sentence.
I was just going to say, most guests don't call first and they will have nowhere to go being so far away from their resources and other shelters. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Lindsay Clark Youngworth. Youngworth. And this is the last name I have. So if any more of you in here wanting to testify. Ask that you run out and sign up on a sheet and we'll bring it in.
Um, my name is Lindsay Clark Youngworth. I am a native Idahoan, a business owner and a homeowner. I lived for a long time, actually raised my son on Wiley Lane. I still own that home now. And offer it as affordable housing for, as an affordable housing rental. Which is very, very close to the proposed shelter facility. And I am in support of the Interface Sanctuary's expansion into my neighborhood. And unfortunately, in our community right now, we have an extraordinary lack of affordable housing. In our urban areas. Rent is. More than half of most individuals take home pay. And I know that there is a lack of shelter for our growing need of help. And this whole conversation has been really helpful, I think, not just for the council, but also. Ms. Stigers, as she tries to come up with a solution for, for the community that she serves. And we do need to make an effort to increase our affordable housing. It is important to remember that at any time, we may be acquainted with or related to a resident of a shelter. And these neighbors have the right to live a life of dignity. This proposed location is more centrally located than their. Current location downtown, has parking, is close to the greenbelt, bike path and on the bus line. Making commuting to and from the shelter for work and doctor's appointments safer and easier and lower cost for residents. I have volunteered for the shelter in the past. And I have been a longtime financial supporter of the sanctuary. I believe that Interface continued programs. And expansion of those programs will only increase the health of our community. I don't think the conversation ends here. I think it will continue to grow and improve. I don't think the conversation ends here. I think it will continue to grow and improve. Should the council approve the shelter's expansion, I would be more than happy to celebrate my new neighbors. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you take a question from the council member?
Oh, yes, Mr. Holly Burton, sorry.
I missed your name.
Lindsay Clark Youngworth.
Lindsay, you mentioned that you thought this was potentially a better location because it was more centrally located. Can you explain to me what you mean by more centrally located than its current location?
I think while you have, it's easier for residents to get to, if they're working in Eagle, for example, or some of the other outlying towns around, even also to that Curtis Interchange. I know that the downtown location is really close to getting onto the connector, but if you don't have a car, you have a few more opportunities to get on different bus lines from that State Street location. What my thinking is, there's probably closer employment, the grocery.
Yep, makes sense. Yeah, so when you're talking about centrally located, you're talking about location to jobs. It's along the bus transit, some grocery stores, not necessarily centrally compared to the other services. Where is that now?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we did have another attendee join, Lorraine Fuji online.
Great, welcome, Lorraine.
Madam Mayor, I believe she just has to unmute.
Did you, great.
And start my video? There we go.
We can hear and see you. Welcome.
Hi, and I have a slide deck. It's CUP twenty-one dash zero 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 two six, expert witness three. Thank you. Madam Mayor and City Council members, my name is Lorraine Fuji and I live in the Lake Harbor area. I challenge the applicant's assertion that the commission only heard opposition from laypeople and did not rely on substantial competent evidence. Here are some of the testimonies they saw. Next slide. Clay Elkin is a first responder stationed at the downtown Fire Station Five. During his testimony, he detailed facts about fire and EMS nine-one-one call volumes to the temporary warming shelter and the Red Lion Inn. Calls increased by seven hundred and ninety-five percent to the warming shelter and two hundred and ninety-five percent to the Red Lion when IFS was using these locations. Mr. Elkin also showed data indicating that a downtown location is more equipped to handle high call volumes with two fire companies and one medic transport within one and a half miles, while the proposed location only has one fire company and no medics within one and a half miles. Next slide. Scott Long, a twenty-four-year employee of the Boise Fire Department, responded to calls directly to and surrounding Interfaith Sanctuary. He witnessed and responded to cases of assault, intoxication, drug use, overdoses, and mental illness that originated directly from the shelter. Scott worries that an even larger shelter will produce even greater call volumes. Next slide. The record shows multiple assertions that the city has barred Boise Police Department members from speaking publicly about the proposed project, along with summaries of police officers' concerns that were expressed privately. Interestingly, there are no statements from BPD or the city contradicting the assertion that police officers were barred from giving public testimony. The spouse of a retired BPD officer interviewed fifty different retired or current officers, and all of them opposed this move. The officers are stressed out, overworked, and they recognize that this move will overburden the department. In a time when it is difficult to find citizens who are willing to step up and become police officers, many police officers are considering resigning or moving to neighboring precincts. Clearly, the Planning and Zoning Commissioners recognize the public safety issues that will arise with this move. I strongly urge you to uphold their decision. Thank you.
All right, we have nobody else online. Is there anybody else in the room today planning on testifying? All right, with that, I'm going to thank you all very much for making it through the day with us today and the way in which you shared your testimony. We will start tomorrow at four, I believe, four o'clock. Thank you all. See you tomorrow.